Recording in progress.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Superior Town Council, the Superior Metropolitan District Number One Board of Directors, and the Superior Liquor Authority for Monday, November tenth, two thousand twenty-five. Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Shannon.
Mayor Mark Laces.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jason Serbu.
Here.
Councilmember Jen Cowish.
Here.
Councilmember Stephanie Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Neil Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Foster.
Here.
Councilmember Heather Craycraft.
Here.
Town manager Matt Magley.
Here.
Town attorney Nicholas Hartman.
Here.
All right, up next is approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Just the one as far as the.
We're pulling the advisory committee interview for item number three is not happening. Any other changes? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve with three removed.
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Craycraft.
Second.
Second from Mayor Pro Tem Serbu. All those in favor? Passes unanimously, and we're on to our board committee reports, council reports. Who'd like to go first tonight?
I'll go. Just a few things. First, I want to start off with a little bit of gratitude. And we've had two incredible events within the last week, the first being the State of Superior, and then the second being the volunteer reception. It's just really great to see, first of all, that the attendance on those was really, really high. So really nice to see members of the community come out. And especially for, I mean, the State of Superior, it's amazing what's happened in the last year. So thanks to Mayor Laces for highlighting all that. It's really impressive. And then the volunteer reception, we've got a really strong community with volunteers and everybody kind of pitching in with their various, their various aspects of what they specialize in. And it's just really cool to see, and I just want to say how appreciative I am of all the people that showed up to that, and then even more so for our volunteers in the community. I did notice, or for one of the members of the community, and I didn't get follow-up information, so in case she's watching, she spoke to Councilmember Craycraft and I about the crosswalk button on the northeast corner of Rock Creek Parkway and McCaslin not being easy to reach and not being ADA compliant. So just so she and other members of the community are aware, those all should be ADA compliant and easily reachable by the end of the year. So staff is already working on that. They're already on top of it, and we're just waiting for that to be installed. So just know that that is coming. From Economic Development and the Chamber, if you're a local business, I mentioned this last time, but there is a passport program, and if you're a local business who's not participating in that yet, I would encourage you to do so. Just a great way to get people in the door and something fun to raise awareness for the community of about all our great local businesses. For residents, just want to remind everybody, as the holiday season is upon us, to shop local. Small Business Saturday is going to be Saturday, November twenty-ninth, so mark your calendar. To make it easier for you to know what businesses are local and what different businesses in town are doing, there is going to be a holiday guide that the Chamber's putting together that's going to go live on November twentieth. So please keep an eye out for that and just make sure we're supporting our local businesses that support our community. I know we've had some discussion, just for the council and really the community at large, about Sundance because we're all feeling very behind on that. I did get an update from Renee at the Chamber. She was unable to come tonight because of a scheduling conflict, but she did want me to pass along some information. She heard that it sounds like sixty percent of the hotel need will be for the Sundance staff alone. So thirty percent is attendees from out of state. So of the hundred percent of people going, thirty percent are out of state, and then the vast majority are staff. Renee is working on a plan to provide local hotel and superior informational packets to attendees and guests so that everybody knows where to go to, again, support local. Renee and Ellen, who's our Economic Development Manager, have a strategy meeting within the next week or two to come up with discussion items and points for the Sundance Film Festival. She said that leadership for Sundance isn't really ready to talk about them coming here locally yet because they're, as you can understand, hyper-focused on Park City because that's coming up in just a few months. But after that, she did say the SBDC Boulder will send a coalition to Park City, and they're going to be talking to local businesses so that they can get feedback from local businesses and the municipalities about kind of what to expect and how things are handled. So she said, once they come back, they're going to have a whole lot more information, and then we can kind of hone in on a strategy there. And I know Councilmember Cowish is leading the charge there as well, so thank you for everything you're doing there. Leading the charge on organizing people to lead the charge. And then just a quick look ahead so everybody can mark their calendars. The Sister City Holiday Bazaar at the Community Center is going to be Saturday, December sixth, from ten to three. So if you want to do some holiday shopping with some really fun artisan gifts, mark your calendar for that. And finally, Winter Fest is going to be Saturday, December thirteenth, from one to five in downtown Superior. And that's just a really fun event to be able to come together as a community and celebrate the holidays. That's it for me.
All right, thanks, Stephanie. Who's next? Neil?
Nothing much to report. Unfortunately, I couldn't attend the volunteer reception, but I was able to attend the State of Superior, which I thought, you know, Mayor Laces did a phenomenal job. So I do appreciate, I think it was when he became mayor and he moved it to the evenings. I think that's been great for attendance, and I continue to appreciate you doing that. So that's it for me.
All right, thanks, Neil. Heather? Who's ready? Mike? Don't all go at once.
Apologies. Still was writing a few things down. Just wanted to say Happy Veterans Day to all those in our community. And no, there'll be more on that subject. Yes, I know, we have a few in the audience. So thank you very much, important members of our community, for your service. My big update, which I know Mayor Pro Tem Serbu will also chime in on, was I had the pleasure of going to DC for four days last week and joined, we were both joined by our incredible staff member Emily Clapper, who we, first of all, just want to say thank you for all of her time and efforts towards what many of us might not know is in the works, but that has been for many years, is getting our own ZIP code. So it's a subject that's been probably tossed around in Town Hall for over twenty years, something that I know town staff has tried to make work many, many times through the years. A coalition was formed in two thousand twenty-three that I appreciate town staff jumping on board with that coalition, so kind of putting us in a room with like communities that are looking for their own ZIP code as well. So it is something that is across the US, and I didn't know it would take a visit to DC to make any progress. So that's the exciting part. I think we, in July, after the twenty-three coalition's efforts to try to get a bill passed to help some communities, those failed. But in July of this year, HR three zero nine five and HR six seven two passed the House, which was a huge push for the coalition's efforts, which includes us, and generating basically the momentum we needed to go to the Senate. So Emily's hard work from a staff perspective got us both on board. We booked flights. We got there. We met with many senators, I think seven in a day, and then caught up with our, excuse me, our Representative Boebert's staff on Thursday morning before she was the one who actually pushed this bill through on the House side. So a lot of details, but very exciting for the town of Superior that we're making progress. It's going to be still probably another, hopefully, less than a year to hopefully see something come through, but the Senate side was positive. So very honored to be representing our community and got to see how it is done on the Hill. So I know many people get that opportunity, but if you ever do, I would definitely say go for it. So that's all my updates.
Thanks, Heather. Mike? Jen?
Yeah, sure, I'll go. So I want to say first, a big thank you to our staff. Two members, well, really, it's a whole team effort, I know that it is, but we have folks that chase grant money like it's, like it's their only job. And we are really fortunate. To Allison James, our Disaster Recovery Manager, she was able to secure more funds for the Marshall Fire Recovery that, at this point in this administration, really was unexpected and a wonderful surprise to receive. And then our planning department put together a package to apply for a grant to get funding to support the education and standing up of promotion of ADUs in our community. And so some of the things they can use those funds for are things like pre-approved ADU plans, things that our residents, if they are interested, wouldn't have to then pay for these things. So it's a really big deal, and it's contributing to a larger housing conversation that we're having regionally. One of the other meetings I went to this last week was, well, there's been a ton of housing meetings happening, but this one specifically was around funding and really kind of how to unstuck the housing market right now. About, I think, I want to say seventy percent of the loans are under four percent mortgage rates. So people are not moving, right? Like, they're not letting their homes go. Like the normal cycle of, like, move into a condo and then move into a bigger house and then raise kids and then move into a smaller, like, that's not happening because people, they can't move. So we talked about a lot of creative ideas. Senator Bennett was there to discuss, and really, his policy team was just writing notes feverishly to try to come up with some ideas for how, just on a regional level, I mean, at the state as well, but really, there's a lot of folks in Boulder County working on these issues, trying to find a way to start to move things. And I think it'll be, you know, a lot of, a lot of hands, a lot of options that will eventually make this happen. So it's great work and ongoing, so I'm excited about that. As Stephanie said, I'm leading the cause to get people to lead the cause for Sundance. I do not want to own Sundance, but I realize that there are residents that are very kind of like, what are we doing? What are we doing? And so I just did an open meetup. Anyone can come that's curious about what the Superior residents, not the town government, not any formal group, but just residents that would like to discuss how they're going to be involved in Sundance and what they'd like to see as far as our community. So on November twelfth, that's Wednesday evening, from four to six PM at Pat's Tap. It's an open invite. Anybody that wants to come can come discuss. There's already some folks that are in, you know, the lanes of the film industry, which is very out of my wheelhouse, that are starting to put some ideas together. And so if you are interested, please come. It's, I think things will eventually formalize, but as Councilmember Miller said, they're all still very focused on Park City, and they're not focused on us yet. So have some patience, but also, if you've got creative energy around this, like, come on out and talk about it. Tomorrow, Veterans Day, we'll be, the Superior veterans will be at the Bambi Brewing from four to six. So that's open to, anybody's welcome to come, but always looking for more veterans in Superior. And you don't have to be a veteran if you're a veteran family member. You know, if you just have a special connection to veterans, that way you're welcome. We're, we're an inclusive group there, so come on by. And then I also want to note, last night, I was voted to be the chair of the Colorado Democratic Veterans Council, so this is very partisan-specific. So what I'll be doing there is working on initiatives statewide to bring more veterans that are registered Democrats or Democratic, curious folks. So if you know anyone who's a veteran anywhere, anywhere in the state, really, you can send them my way. But the intent of this is to get more veterans elected. It's really important that we have people that have served in these positions because they know what the experiences are and what to advocate for, whereas other folks are, are on the outside, and, and they haven't lived through that. So, yeah, I think that's it. Thanks.
Thanks, Jen. Jason?
Good evening. A few things. Times in the past, Halloween, October thirty-first, was a seniors poker party at Community Center. It was fantastic. Every poker player dressed up in costume. It was fantastic. I went as Clint Eastwood from The Good, The Bad, and The Ugly. It did not help me at all. I got fleeced. But it was a fantastic event. It was a lot of fun. Former trustee Hammerly showed up dressed as a pirate. Carol Burkett, who runs the tables, came as the Queen of Hearts, but she didn't get the Queen of Hearts at all, which was kind of interesting. But it was, a good time was had by all. And if any seniors are interested at all to go play poker on Fridays, it's from two thirty to four thirty every Friday in the Community Center. And it's just an amazing event, a lot of fun, costs nothing, and it's just a really, really good time. Jesus Garcia Corona. November seventh this past week was a day celebrating this gentleman in, in Mexico. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is kind of, it's kind of been a fan of mine with history. He died on November seventh, nineteen oh seven, and he was a Mexican railroad brakeman who actually saved an entire town when a train full of dynamite lost control, and he rode the brake to get it beyond the town where it then detonated, killing him and basically saving the entirety of the town. He's regarded as a national hero in Mexico. A lot of schools, a lot of plazas, a lot of streets are named after him. And if you've ever wondered why a lot of Mexican gentlemen are named Jesus, and you think it's named after Jesus Christ, he's actually named after this gentleman. So that's kind of a fun fact, just so you know, kind of do my Steve Harvey. And that's the rest of the story, but I don't think anybody's old enough to know what that is, so. enough to know what that is. So, okay, good. I feel better. Like Heather said, we went to DC to talk with Congress about passing the legislation for updating the zip codes and hopefully getting Superior our own zip code. There's a lot of very, very important things to go with this. Obviously, insurance is one thing, sales tax revenue that when you go online and you click Superior and it defaults to Louisville and you can't get it to change, we're not seeing that sales tax. Somebody else is. I was really impressed with Senator Michael Bennett. He'll be running for governor in '26. But he actually came out himself, sat down with us, asked a lot of really pointed questions, and was really, really engaged in the process. And the other two individuals that I think offices that really impressed me the most was Senator Barasso from Wyoming. His staff members were fantastic. She took about two pages of notes from the questions we asked, and she asked a lot of questions herself, and she answered a lot of things for us. So we really started gaining some traction. And as Heather said, we got a rush meeting with Representative Boebert's office. And while we didn't meet Representative Boebert, her staff was amazing. They actually pushed the first House bill for the zip code. And they were just so gracious, so amazing to talk to. Leaving there, I really kind of felt like there's a lot of bipartisanship we don't see. Bennett had mentioned that he talks a great deal with Boebert back and forth about this bill. And I'm thinking, every time you watch a news thing on either side, everybody's at each other's throats, and you get there and they're actually talking to each other. So that was actually kind of refreshing to see. And it gave me a lot of hope. So when we first got there, I'm thinking, I don't know if we're going to get this done. And by the time we left, I'm thinking, wow, I think this is, this looks really, really good. We've got a ways to go on it, like Heather mentioned. But I think it's a, it's a very good sign, especially since we've got 80 municipalities from 26 states are looking to do this. So this could certainly be a game changer for us going forward. In the future, coming up, Saturday, the 15th, Chat with the Chief is at the Community Center, 9 o'clock until 10 or so. Fantastic event to go to, to talk with Sergeant Salomon about our town, about public safety, about things that are concerning you with safety and security in the town. And then that night is the Face Band. They will be playing at the Civic Center in downtown. Tickets are $25. Drink tickets are $8. Please get them. Attend. It's going to be an amazing night. If everybody talks about, we need more things downtown, we need events, we need bands, this is your opportunity to show up, show the town, Superior, how cool we are, how we can pack a venue, how we can get down with a really good band and have an amazing time. And that's all I have with the last thing to say. Mayor Laces did an amazing job, I thought, with the, you know, Face of Superior. It was a great job. Came away impressed with that, as I always do. And thank you for, again, making, you know, you walk away from that, I thought the venue was fantastic. Everything was fantastic. But everything you had to say and the questions you answered, it really was a very positive impact for the town of Superior. So I think the residents are really happy about that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Appreciate that. Good evening, everybody. Good to see you all. Thank you, Heather and Jason, for going to DC and advocating on our behalf for the zip code bill. That'll be really exciting to see that come to fruition. I spoke to Representative Boebert a year ago when that was originally introduced and noted our support for it. So it's, these things take, take the time that they take sometimes. But it's good to see that it's moving forward. So onwards and upwards. I want to thank staff for their help and support, putting together the State of Superior presentation. It's a, it's a really incredible task, trying to digest a year's worth of everything that we do here in town into an hour-long presentation. We can't cover everything, but we have so many important projects and incredible departments that are doing these, these projects for our town. And it's, it's always just, it just takes me back every time I put it together and think about like all, you know, we're a relatively small town, 14,000 people, four square miles, but we really get a lot accomplished. And we have a lot to be proud of in this community. So thank you to staff. Certainly makes my life easier having the ability to rely on staff support for putting that thing together. And thank you for everybody who came, including my fellow council members. Also want to thank staff for putting together the volunteer appreciation dinner, and then for all the volunteers who attended that dinner. Just as a reminder, what we covered on Thursday night, we have over 300 volunteers here in Superior, and they've donated over 8,300 hours of service to this community, which translates to over $350,000 worth of value. So it's incredible, the amount of just generosity and giving that we have in this community. We're really better off because of everybody's willingness to serve the community. And I encourage everybody who's interested in serving the community to do so. There's more than a handful. There's ample opportunities to serve, depending on what you like. You like parks, you like open space, you're a member of the youth, you want to serve in the Youth Council, you're a senior, you're a veteran, you name it, we have an opportunity for you to serve the community. So if you're looking for the opportunity to serve, this is the season of giving, this is the season of service. We've always got opportunities on our advisory committees. Take a look at our town website, see if there's something that resonates with you. And I'd encourage you to step up and serve the local community. Couple upcoming events and reminders. This Thursday at Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, they're hosting their second Town Hall. They had one about a month and a half ago. This one is Thursday, November 13th, from 4:30 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. If you are interested or impacted by Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport, I encourage you to go there, meet with the airport director, meet with airport staff. I think it's important for us as a community that's impacted from the airport to show up to these events. The last event that they hosted was pretty sparsely attended from the public. And I think that that just gives the airport an opportunity to say, well, we made ourselves available and then nobody showed up. So we want to show up, and they give us an opportunity to have a venue with them. So let's do that. Just a reminder, this is our only meeting in November because of the Thanksgiving holiday. Our next meeting is going to be December 8th for our full Town Council meeting. The week before that, on December 1st, we have a work session. And then we're done for the balance of the year, and we'll see you in 2026. Town Manager Matt Magley.
Nothing to report. Thanks.
Town Attorney Nick Hartman.
Nothing here.
All right. And Town Clerk Shannon.
Nothing.
Okay. We're on to public comment on our consent agenda presentations and non-agenda items. If you'd like to make public comment and you're here in the boardroom, we have a signup sheet at the desk there. Give us your first and last name and the community in which you reside. You don't need to give us your full street address. If you're participating via Zoom and you'd like to give public comment, use the raise hand feature, and I'll call on you in the order in which I see your hand raised. Do we have anybody signed up tonight? Anybody want to jump up and give public comment? Mr. McCoy students are welcome to give public comment. You can tell us all the things you like or dislike about Superior. All right. You probably get extra credit if you speak in public comment. Just saying. All right. Turning to Zoom, David Harper.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on the Carmel presentation, which is coming later. The first one is that the draft comp plan is supposed to be available next month. And I hope it will include recommendations for all the opportunity areas. So in some ways, this proposal seems to be jumping the gun. With respect to the plan itself, I have to admit, I'm biased against 50-foot apartment buildings. This is partly because every time I drive south on McCaslin, the one being built on Block 8 seems almost overwhelming. I note that all the purely residential buildings in the new downtown are three stories and around 40 feet. That is also the height limit in the marketplace. And of course, all the houses in Sagamore are limited to 32 feet. So three-story buildings seem to have a human scale and are very compatible with what we've got. And I'm doubtful that four-story ones would fit very well. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else on Zoom like to give public comment? All right, seeing none. Circle back to the boardroom. Anybody here have a change of heart, want to exercise their First Amendment rights? All right. Okay, seeing none. Public comment is closed. And we're moving on to our project updates section of the agenda, which is our South Pool project update and discussion.
Leslie, are you introducing this item, or Jordan?
Jordan is.
Oh.
Let me go grab them.
Okay.
We anticipate more public comment.
Yeah. That's, that's fine.
Here we go. Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. So we're here today, oh, I'm Jordan, Project Manager for the town. We're here this evening to show you some design concepts for the South Pool renovation project. Town staff has been working with our consultant BRS since like late September, when you all approved their design contract. And I think we've come up with some great options for discussion. We're hoping to get a little guidance, priorities from you all, so that we can kind of move forward with one of these concepts, and then kind of hone in on the design a little more. Don't want to go down the wrong path. So that's what we're hoping for tonight. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mary. And that's it.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Mary Shambeck, Project Manager with BRS Architecture. The update on the South Pool tonight is options to design a new pool versus renovate the existing pool in its, in its existing footprint. So as you all know, BRS was contracted to renovate the existing bathhouse and existing pool, kind of as it is now, upgrading all the equipment, modernizing the filtration and sanitation systems, and providing some new fun amenities to this pool, replacing the water slide with a new one, and renovating the baby waiting pool as well. When it came to developing the cost estimate for this work and an updated budget that we received from staff, it was our recommendation and that of our aquatics consultant to at least investigate what it would take and what it would cost to basically demolish the existing pool shell itself and design a new pool on the existing site. This would be more in line with the community input and more in line with kind of best design practices for, for pool design today, seeing as this pool was designed 25 years ago. So we presented several concepts to staff and worked through them, the budget estimates of each concept. They landed on a recommendation of which option they liked the best. So as Jordan mentioned, what we're kind of seeking tonight is feedback on those options and hopefully approval with which path to go down to move forward with design. We started this package with just an update or reminder on the community input we did earlier this year, since it's been a few months. So questions that we had asked of the community in both the open house that we hosted, as well as the online survey. So the next few slides, I won't read through everything, because I know you all have looked at this, but it was just what was top ranked in terms of aquatic features that people would like to see at the pools. And summary of our assessment we did of the South Pool also earlier in the year, just noting some of the deficiencies, some things we will need to address in terms of energy code compliance, accessibility code compliance issues. We provided that all to you in the assessment report we did earlier this year. Also, one thing to note is the existing sand filter will need replacement prior to the 2026 swim season. So that is a cost and design work we are planning to, or hoping to finish actually this year, which will be an expense that we can then kind of take out of this construction project that will happen next year, hopefully. So I'm just going to start on the bathhouse and the site work real quick. We did ask a CMGC to give us a rough ordering magnitude for a very high-level concept to renovate the bathhouse without getting into too many details yet. The site improvements estimate that they developed is this range at the top of the slide, 650,000 to 900,000. That includes an all-new concrete pool deck, because we do know there's some drainage and heaving issues with the concrete you have now. It includes new shade structures, so we'd replace the existing and provide some more shade. It includes the cost to demolish the pool, all of the required site work for utilities and connections that we'll need to do, and the tap feed to upsize the water service to the building because it's just insufficient in size. The two deficiencies we need to address if we're renovating the bathhouse is that the pool equipment room is currently only around 250 square feet. And even if, especially if we go with the new pool design, we do need more space in that room. We plan to take it from the existing women's locker room. So we currently have no plans to increase the footprint of the building itself. All of the exterior walls will stay. The other deficiency is we don't have a gender, gender neutral restroom. So we do need to provide one in this bathhouse as well. This is a very high-level concept plan in order for us to get a cost estimate for this, which is at the top of this screen, the estimate for the proposed renovation of the bathhouse, which would include upgrading all of the locker rooms, new finishes, new fixtures, new lighting, upgrading the lobby, upgrading the guard office space, and increasing the size of that pool mechanical room. 1.06 million to 1.3 million is the range of that cost.
Can I ask a quick question with regard to the layout there?
Yeah.
So the family changing room, it looks like there's not a way to access that from the men's room, correct? That's only accessible from the pool deck?
Correct.
And then, and maybe I'm alone here, but it feels to me like the men's and women's should be switched then. So the family changing area would be closer to the women's because I feel like I see a lot of ladies at the pool with their children. Maybe I'm alone in thinking that. But I was curious with the thought there on placement.
Sure. We hadn't really gotten into those details yet. So this was really just showing because that's where the existing men's and women's rooms are. But once we get into designing and laying out the actual features, we can certainly look at swapping those if it, yeah, if it makes sense.
Thank you.
Just a comment, like, but both the men's and women's room, you're effectively shrinking them by getting rid of the locker rooms. And, and I mean, I don't know the data here, but, you know, a lot of that space, to me, was used by people changing, right? Like, so now people are going to have to use about half as many square feet to change, especially... And the good thing about the South Pool, there's usually not as much of a rush as there is at the North Pool for kids changing. I mean, do we have any data, like, that we can support the number of people coming through here with effectively, you know, a 40% smaller set of changing rooms?
I don't have data about numbers. However, I can tell you, these are going to remain larger than the locker rooms. We do have the North Pool. We also had a lot of feedback from staff and those managing the pool that the locker and bench areas in these locker rooms really don't get used very much at all.
Okay.
People tend to come to this pool and leave and shower and change and everything at home.
That's fair.
So having a changing area, especially one that is so wide open, giving that up sounded like it was totally fine with staff. So we believe we can also just make this much more efficient. The way this is shown, it looks like we're cutting out the showers altogether, but we'll make sure there's at least one shower in the new locker rooms.
Got it. Got it.
So they'll be completely reconfigured.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
Can, I just, I think your comment was absolutely correct. But I would just like to throw in, maybe leave it that way, to present the opportunity for the conversation to go, well, the changing room is by your locker room, so you can take care of it. Just a suggestion.
It's a good point.
When we get to the actual kind of formal design, I don't have an objection to that. One of the things that we did with the, the North Pool design is we oriented the family changing room off of the, kind of the kiddie pool. So, you know, if we're just kind of thinking about like, where the layout makes sense, you know, that, that's an improvement. But at the same time, like, if it's closer to the women's room, you know, I don't know. Just something, something to think about. I think maybe the family changing room near the kiddie room is, the kiddie pool is a good design consideration.
Yeah, we'll talk through pros and cons, especially with all our subs here as well, because the pool equipment room location is obviously what's closest to where the waiting pool is. Moving that will kind of, having that really close, it will cut down on a lot of your piping lengths to get to the pool. But with the new splash, we'll certainly have a conversation when we get to it and weigh the pros and cons of moving that space to somewhere else in the building. Okay, so for the pool concepts, this slide is just listing the existing pool metrics. Um, okay, so for the pool concepts, this slide is just listing the existing pool metrics, so you have that as a base for comparison. Um, the 20 linear feet is about the size of that zero-depth entry beach area. Your depths, um, the water slide currently is 12 feet high, and the user capacity of the pool is 270 people. And you have overall about 4,000 square feet of water. That's just for the pool itself. Um, in option one, this is just to renovate existing, so the footprint would stay the same. We would not be adding more water to the pool. Um, it would really just be refinishing the pool shell and upgrading all of the equipment. In this option, we will do the new splash pad in lieu of the waiting pool, since we went with the zero-depth entry at the North Pool instead of a splash pad. Here, we already have zero-depth entry, so adding a splash pad is really exciting. For staff too, it has the connection to the playground. It will be able to be open even when the pool is closed to the public, so it adds a lot of programmatic opportunity to this pool. Um, this, we're also replacing the water slide with a slide with runout that's 25 feet high, so it'll be a much more exciting slide, higher. Um, and then upgraded water features, like the, we'll take out the mushroom fountain, upgrade it with newer play structures and geysers in the, in the pool itself. Um, so the renovation cost for that is listed here. For option two, this is obviously a new pool. So it has been reconfigured where the zero-depth entry is on the north side, and that gives it a southern exposure, which is ideal for that area of the pool. It maintains the three lap lanes, maintains the same water depth. Um, it does increase your user capacity, because it's adding a little bit over 1,000 square feet of water to the pool. Um, so we've got the renovation costs down here, and you can see the broken out costs for a few of the features there. This option also has, um, if you see this kind of strip along the right side, that is a sun shelf. So it is a shallow, about six or eight inch area of water that you can put lounge chairs in. Um, so that's kind of a new feature at this pool that you don't have now. And then you'll see that the new water slide is generally in the same area on the deck. We've placed it there, um, so that we do not have to expand any of the concrete deck. It would be within the same footprints, footprint within the fence boundary. Option, the next option is kind of intermediate here, so it has this, a zero-depth entry that's now 45 linear feet. It maintains the three lap lanes. They do change configuration here, so that you can have another section of leisure pool here that will include um, a shelf all the way around it. It includes restorative jets. And um, this option also just kind of changes some of the configuration and adds a play structure at the bottom of the zero-depth entry. So that's one of these kind of high vertical play structures that has a lot of water features to it. Um, so we've got even more user capacity here, um, and the list of options included in this uh, renovation at the bottom here too. Uh, the next option is the same as the one we just looked at, however, we are adding at the bottom here a hydro jet alcove. Um, this is in lieu of doing like a separate hot tub on the site that's separate on the deck. This is incorporated into the pool itself. It would have warmer water, it would have jets, so it's very similar to a hot tub, but it's within the same, um, the same pool. It's connected and um, would be off of the lap lanes there. So you can see that additional cost to add that feature to this pool here and the new renovation cost update to this slide.
Can I ask a question about that warm water alcove? Because I didn't know that was an option
Mm-hmm.
um, until reading through the slides. And I know that a hot tub was a big ask from the community, and staff feedback was that the uptime on those is pretty spotty, um, and they're difficult to maintain. So can you explain as far as a warm water alcove, is that more reliable? Does that look similar or different from a maintenance standpoint to a hot tub?
That's a great question. Um, I would have to probably ask our aquatics consultant for some maybe pros and cons on that. Um, I do know because it's part of the same water that it cuts down on the kind of number of pumps and equipment that you would need if you did a separate hot tub. So operationally, probably just easier to operate and manage. Um, in terms of downtime or anything, I'm not, I can't answer that, but I can get you that info.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Yep. Um, and then option four is a more comprehensive option. Same configuration as the last. Um, however, you'll see what's new in this is a current channel. Um, it's small, so we call this a current channel. It's not something where you need to have tubes and sitting on a tube like a lazy river. It really is just kind of has um, a current to it to move through. Really great for um, fitness classes, for water walking, for therapy. Um, it appeals to all ages. Um, so that's something we've added as an option here to consider. Um, so this option also has a diving board, um, but it would be um, as a part of those lap lanes, so the lap lanes would not be able to be used when the diving board was open. Um, so that is this area, the depth here. This pool option goes down to 12 feet 6 inch deep there at the diving board. So this is the deepest pool of the options. And you'll see that cost to add that one meter diving board listed at the bottom here as well. And this is also around the same amount of water, so we've just, to add the current channel, we've just cut down on the size of the leisure pool next to it.
Just a question before you go to the staff recommendation. I mean, we started about with, I already forgot the number, you know, um, 4,000 square feet of water, so 150,000 gallons. And now we're talking 53, 5400 square feet of water, so you're like 200,000 gallons of water. Um, you know, operating costs are gonna go up. The other piece of it that it'd be helpful to understand, you know, do we have a capacity issue at the pool right now in terms of like the ability to handle people? I know we have a staffing shortage, which case, that's what negates our ability to let more people into the pool. But if we're going down the path of everything here is just bigger, 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 are, are we gonna be able to staff the pool appropriately for this larger pool? I know you don't have the answer there, because like, part of this is like the operating cost for, you know, a pool that's literally 30% bigger. The, you know, headcount to manage and run a pool that's 30% bigger. And like, I honestly don't know that we've ever had to turn people away because a pool's too full, as opposed to the, you know, enough lifeguards to oversee.
I've had to wait.
Okay. But is that a lifeguard issue or the pool?
No, it's capacity.
Okay. But I mean, those are like peak times, right? It's just like going on I-25. Like, right now, there's no traffic. But, you know, a couple of times an hour, a couple of times a day, there's a lot of traffic, and yeah, you gotta, you gotta manage through it. So do you optimize for that fullest time, and then you've got all this unused capacity for like the other nine hours of the day? I mean, it, it, it's a question, right? Because the sacrifice here is, our operating costs are at least 30% higher than today. So as we think about the capital costs here, I really want to make sure someone has specked out what the operating costs are gonna be on this for the next 30 years on an annual basis, given the enormity of the increase.
Yeah, we will be determining the operating costs, especially when we also do our sustainability study at the same time, and looking at how much the additional water is impacting that. Um, I don't know if staff knows like how many days out of the season it reaches capacity. I know it, it has before.
And, and there's a couple of days, and there's a couple of hours within the days where again, there are two, you know, there, there's things that we could do if, if that's a true constraint.
I know we, we do reach capacity on some of those hot days. Capacity is a calculation that includes both the deck space and the pool space, so um, it's, it's, you know, a, a calculation that's overseen by our aquatic code here in the state of Colorado. Um, so additional water doesn't necessarily dictate that we're gonna have to have more staff. It, it will help more people get in the water. Um, the overall capacity will change a little bit. Um, but I think for, from the recruiting standpoint, um, this is just gonna be a much funner pool to work at. So, um, I think we can put some extra effort into recruiting for any extra staff we might feel like we need.
I'll just say also, you know, so there's, there's the getting into the pool, uh, you know, that capacity aspect of it. Uh, getting into the, the, the building and, and the, and the deck, but then the actual pool itself, uh, one, you know, one of the limiting factors, and I, I do have a question about this, that we'll talk about it at the right, right point, but you know, we have 4,000 square feet of water right now. But that's not really, I think, like an accurate representation of like the usable space, because like some of it is roped off for the exit point for the slide, which they don't let people in, right? It's just for the people that are sliding. So that, that takes away like a quarter of the pool. Um, and so you, if you only have like 3,000 square feet of pool, and then, you know, a good maybe 1,000 square feet of that is like the zero-depth entry where it's just to your ankles. Um, you know, you, you actually have a much smaller pool, and at that point, like on, on a hot day, like the pool does get to the point where it's, it is really crowded. Uh, and there's not a lot of room to, to move around in it. So.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Okay, so, um, option five, um, this is um, taking the previous option, uh, but removing the diving board, and this is the option that staff is recommending um, as their kind of preferred choice. Um, so it is the lower cost due to removing the diving board, but it does still include the current channel, a 25-foot-high water slide, the new splash pad, of course, and the new play, play structure uh, in the center at the zero-depth entry. Um, so this would not have the cost of needing to dig deeper as well to do a deep end for the diving board. Um, so this is the um, option they landed on. Um, the current channel versus diving board um, discussion was that the current channel just serves a lot more people, a larger demographic, larger age ranges. Um, and the diving board, again, it creates restrictions on the use of the lap lanes. Um, so that's that. And then, um, we've listed out, just so you could kind of understand what the cost implications are of each of these features we've discussed. Um, this is, kind of broke, breaks out the cost of each one. You know, so if you wanted to look at any of the options and understand, well, if we remove this or want to add this feature, um, including, which we hadn't shown in an option, but the cost to add an additional slide flume um, is here as well, just in case, and that would be, make it two slides. Um, to do that, we would have to increase the size of the pool deck, however, to fit both.
Just a question, because a lot of the slides said they included a new play structure also in the staff recommendation, but there's no dollar amount next to that on this slide or the summary slide. So that's over and above all the pool stuff, right?
It's included in this number.
Okay.
Yes. All the items in red below each, on each slide are included in this renovation cost total. It wasn't broken out separately, but it's in there. Yeah. Um, so we then just have a summary slide that includes all of these options. Um, so it gives you the idea of everything included, the overall water depth, um, the deck space and capacity, and then underneath the black line, it is the pool cost for each option, and then we've just added those bathhouse and site costs um, from earlier in the presentation, and soft costs to come to a total project estimate for each option. And you'll see we did um, deduct the filter work that will be paid for with a separate budget. So that is money that will come out of the budget next year.
Question about the, the sand filter work that's gonna get done over the winter. Um, will that be sized for whatever recommendation the council says go with tonight, so that we're, we can reuse that or reuse most of it?
Yes, exactly. Great question, because um, they do kind of need that direction in order to size that filter appropriately. But they are going to size it now, so that it will work for whatever option we end up choosing.
Can you help me understand those soft costs? I know obviously the 380 for design, and then we've got tap fees and permit. What else is within that soft cost?
So, um, you'll see, we have uh, some FFNE, um, some kind of technology costs. And um, the difference with the options where we have a new pool and why it goes up is because we do, we will have higher design fees, especially for our aquatic consultant, our civil engineer, and our structural engineer, because it will be more design work on their port than what we've already been contracted for.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Tap fee is effectively a fee to the, the town, right?
Yes. But we're including it in the budget.
We could just waive that, right?
It'd be nice, but no, uh, because SMD1's a separate enterprise fund.
Okay, that's fine. All right, just checking. And we are the, I mean, we are the taxing authority, so. Um, just, you know, a question, because like, the very, the, the staff memo basically laid out, we've got about 4.5 million. So a little surprised to see that the, the staff recommendation is a million and a quarter above the amount of money we have, so um, I know we're not making an official decision tonight, but it does feel like we have to give direction. And I'm really struggling on how to give direction when we've got a million and a quarter dollar hole relative to the available funds. And that's not a question for you. That's for everybody behind you.
Well, it's, it's not a, a whole with respect to the available funds. It's we've got like the arbitrary amount that we've got from the bond proceeds versus what we actually think is the appropriate amount to spend on what we actually want to deliver to the community.
Right. So, but if we, and we had a long list, and if we take a million more for the pool, that's a million less, a million less to spend on the other things. So.
Well, so it's, um, it wouldn't be a million extra, so if we went with like the staff option five here, so we're already planning for 5 million overall, so it'd be that 0.56 would be what we're over.
Well, 0.56 to 0.1.23. So I'm, I'm thinking, because when we went through the North Pool, everything came at the high end. And as much as I love that everything would come in at the low end here, I'm just insulating myself that we may come in at the high end again here too.
It is possible, yes. Anything's possible in aquatics, I'm finding. Um, but we, we are anticipating um, some potential savings on some other projects, like the um, structural and drainage project at the community center, maybe some street projects. Um, so we did just want to kind of show you all the options, um, so that we can kind of prioritize from here. Didn't really want to leave anything out here in the beginning. Um, and that's why they kind of put together this à la carte pricing here. So we, just to kind of help everyone get their mind wrapped around how much these features cost, because they are expensive. Um, so.
We're, we're also, and you can jump in, Brandon, if you want, planning to bid this out.
Fair enough.
Um, so we're hoping to get a fair number of bids and competitive bids and.
We got an email today with, um,
Yeah.
which I got confused, because I thought it was this presentation, and it was apparently just an unsolicited email, so.
It's not a question, but more of a comment. I just want to echo what Councilmember Shaw said about wanting to understand kind of the operating expenses and what that's gonna do. Uh, obviously, there's gonna be a lot more stuff going on, bigger pools, so um, as soon as we can get a good ballpark estimate of what that's gonna look like, I think it would be really helpful to bring into the fold.
Sure, and I, I think we can do the same kind of breakdown we did for past years, um, that we did for North Pool. Um, and then take into account, like, you know, we're already planning on doing some of this filter work, so that will kind of come out, but that is a more efficient filter, um, that we're planning on that would match the North Pool filter that's being designed, or that's designed. Um, so there will be some savings and trade-offs here and there, like more efficient heating, things like that, that will save us some money, um, but we'll certainly put that together.
But over the next 30 years, the price of natural gas is gonna go up, price of electricity is gonna go up, so factoring all that into a 30-year NPV would be really great.
Yes, and so, um, BRS has Group 14 um,
Okay.
on board, um, so they're not really involved yet, but once we start getting further into the design, they'll be much more involved, and we'll be able to speak to all of that too.
Great, thank you.
Hi Jordan, I have a quick question. Could you tell me what the demographic age-wise of the users of this pool are, for the most part? Are they younger children, and usually the older children go to the North Pool?
I don't, I don't know if we've looked into that.
Because this is one of the splash pads, I think.
I mean, I think we consider this a family pool, so I think the activities are, tend to be more family-oriented. Um, I mean, I think it attracts all age groups. We might get more teenagers with some of these um, new amenities, like a higher slide, those kind of things. The, the current channel might be a whole lot of fun. Um, we'll continue to utilize the climbing wall and those kind of things that we have to hit that ever-challenging teenage age group, but um, definitely, we, we see families with small kids. We, this is one of our um, most popular swim lesson locations, so.
Yeah, I, I have to, you know, I, I share a concern with Councilmember Shaw and Councilmember Foster on, on the price. Um, whether it's 4.6, we've got 5 mil, we've got some money down to go with, with 5 million dollars. We have an aging demographic in the town, and we're not turning over housing to younger families like we should. And eventually, that's gonna start aging out, causing problems. And I'm just wondering if we aren't trying to create the Cadillac of all pool designs for the highest price, when we might be better off looking at a lower number that actually might be more economical for the town going forward, because you know, I'm always hearing things like, "Oh yeah, we can pay for that, and we can just pull a million dollars from somewhere else." Well, that million dollars has to come from somewhere else. And I never want it to be like, "Hey, we've got an extra credit card in the mail. Let's sign up for it and go shopping." You know, the fiscal responsibility of the town is something that I, I'm a little leery about getting too far out in front of our skis on something that's gonna be realistically 1.5 million dollars more than the budgeted cost that we've got to build it. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned on that. I love the amenities. I mean, I love the lap pool. That would be fantastic for the aging population of seniors, as far as like doing therapy and hydrotherapy. Um, but, I mean, is it worth an additional 1.5 million dollars? it worth an additional $1.5 million? I, I don't know at this point. I just want to be very cautious with, with the numbers we're getting, especially once we start to bid this out to future numbers, it's going to come in at higher bid numbers. And that's going to put the price up again. And then for whatever reason, if it gets delayed again, then we're looking at another year of numbers getting higher, because construction prices are not going down, they're just going to continue to keep going up. So I just want to be a little bit cautious with which one we decide to go forward with. I want to be very prudent about what we spend on it and make sure we're getting the best bang for our buck and not just bankrupting ourselves.
Understood. And we do have, Mary mentioned that we have a CMGC that gave us some pricing for this. So they will help us throughout the design. So, you know, we kind of ran into this issue with North Pool where we didn't have concrete numbers until we were so late in the design. So we're trying to really avoid that this time so that BRS can align, you know, the design with the budget that's coming in at each stage. So I think that's really going to help us, but I understand the concern.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
And there is the possibility, and Brandon, we talked about this, given the timetable with the North Pool construction, like if we can agree on a design concept tonight and then move forward on actually getting the, all the engineering put together, that bidding everything out together could result in some cost savings for both, both projects. You know, my personal feeling on this is I love what I'm seeing. I think that it's, it would be really short sighted if we just simply redid what is already there. I think that then you're just kind of like operating within the constraints of what the developer developed back in the 90s, and they would never develop that today. It's just what they built then, it was relatively inexpensive. It served the community fine, but this, this community deserves something better, something much better. And that's what the voters voted for back in November of 2024, when they passed the sales tax ballot measure. And so we, we want to make sure that we execute on that appropriately. And similarly, I don't want us to be like penny wise and pound foolish here. Like, we need to do this right and give the community what, what the community wants. So I, I mean, I like a lot of the options. I'm leaning towards option five, following staff's recommendation. My general thought on this is I don't like the idea of a diving board necessarily, because I think that that's going to, kind of similarly to what we have with the current, current pool, it's going to occupy an area of town, of the pool that'll get kind of like roped off. Where swimmers aren't going to be able to use it. I think it's a safety and a liability issue. Most community rec pools don't have diving boards. They're more like a relic of like the 70s and the 80s when we grew up, when we were doing things differently, right? So, so as much as I love diving boards personally, I think that that's probably just not a smart decision for the, for the community, though. I do like the idea of like the alcove and kind of like quasi-hot tub hydrojet area. And that was something that we saw in all the surveys, that people really wanted that. So if we were kind of doing à la carte, if we could figure out a way to have that alcove in option five, I would be open to that. One thing that I just want us to be kind of like bearing in mind with this overall design, the current slide that we have at the South Pool is really great for little kids and for like parents with littles. So I, I wouldn't want to have like the huge slide there that all of a sudden is like intimidating for the little kids. So I'm okay losing that slide, provided that we're still, you know, whatever amenities that we have in the pool is like sufficiently catering towards the littles, that they're not like, oh, my only option is to go on the, the big slide, which I'm, I'm terrified about. So as long as that's kind of like in the design considerations, that we're like catering to like all the kids, right, the little kids up to the big kids, I'm, I'm totally on board. I, I like the idea that like we've got the, the current pool and that that might cater to the people that are doing therapy and whatnot, and adding an additional lap lane, I think is, is a good thing. But I really like this design. I think it's creative and I'm all for it. And, you know, we can, we can figure out how to make the budget work. That, to me, is not as much of a consideration as like making sure that we actually get this project done correctly, so that the community is really happy with it.
Okay, great. And anecdotally, I have a 21-month-old, and we go to the Pal dir to Rec Center, and he goes down that slide on my lap over and over and over again, like no fear. So I don't know that they would be deterred by the, by the slide, but maybe.
I know my 13-year-olds will not be deterred by it, but they're in the, a different age bracket.
One other question. I know this has been on a little bit of an expedited design path. Have you had an opportunity to put this in front of any of our committees to get feedback, like Park or anything?
Not yet. So we're going to the Park Committee next Wednesday, the 19th. So we'll kind of present the same information and let them know what your feedback is, and talk next steps with them, get all of their opinions, and kind of move forward with that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I would echo Mark's feedback. I think the diving board is a bit of a liability nightmare and kind of cuts off a large section of the pool for a lot of people. So I wouldn't necessarily be in favor of that. I do like the idea, if there is sufficient uptime, and it's not going to be a nightmare for the warm water alcove, because the meetings that I went to, that seemed to be a resounding theme. And I know, especially for those with aches and pains, that's kind of nice. And just, you know, kind of a respite for the adults while the, the kids are playing. So if there's a way to work that in, that would be great. One piece of feedback I have, I think the lap lanes are great, but it would be nice to not have these walls kind of barricading those in, simply because if people aren't using the lap lanes, if those could be just kind of roped off to where if there's not a lot of people swimming laps, to remove those and allow the pool to be more versatile so that there's more room for kids to play, that would be nice. So it's not, you know, a design feature where you're kind of forced into not using that area.
Sure. And I, we have talked to our aquatic staff about that, and potentially maybe even just having one lap lane open during like peak times so that kids could come into that. It would be roped off, and they could use that whole upper area where the other two lap lanes are. So that is under consideration.
Great. Thank you.
Maybe Leslie can explain. So the, the alcove, I remember some of the concerns were just things that happen in a hot tub outside of the pool. So if you've now put the hot tub in the pool, how, is there an expectation that different behavior is going to happen? So I just would like to understand, how do you mitigate, you know, that? And I'm leaning towards option five as well. I'd much rather ask for, it looks like it's compartmentalized in a way where we can ask for everything that we want and then remove some things if we just cannot get it into the budget where we need it to be. But there's five teenagers in the room right now, so I'm not going to make any decisions till some of them give some feedback on this project when it's public comment time.
I mean, generally, without getting real technical into the sanitation of the pool, a hot tub by itself is a very small, small body of water. So it's, it's difficult to keep the sanitation, keep on top of the sanitation. With all the, dilution is, is important. When it's connected in an alcove like this, it becomes part of the bigger pool sanitation system, and it's much more effective and efficient. So just generally.
Just some quick comments. Can you go to that summary slide? I think that's, I really appreciate putting this in here.
This one or the?
The cost one, yeah. Because you, if you go left to right, you know, and you can kind of see a lot of the inefficiencies we have with the existing pool. The pool deck is 10,000 square feet. So we, as Mark alluded to, a whole bunch of unused space. And then if you go to, if you include the, what were they called? The, the sun shelf, right? And option two, you lose the capacity of the pool, because you only have 300 people that can be in the pool. You go all the way to the right, and I think option five kind of nails, you know, everything. And yes, I do have concerns about the operating costs. I have a concern about like, you know, Monday afternoon, this thing's could be like empty, and there's just a lot of water that we got to move and manage versus Saturday and Sunday is probably the right size. And I, and I totally get that you do want to try to, we're going to have one crack at sort of rebuilding this thing, and it'll never be exactly right. But I do believe that option five nails a lot of those key considerations and sort of works within the confines without having to like move the outer walls and everything else. So still concerned that, that, you know, the 5.5 to 6.6 and 1/4 is probably going to be closer to 6 and 1/4. So we'll have to make some other trade offs elsewhere. So I'm all on board with pursuing option five, you know, for like the next round. But I do want to try to, as we get back to the, the tax in how much money we've raised from the tax, like what are we potentially having to take out, or how are we going to try to find a way to fit this in? And then longer term, you know, this is a much larger pool. It's going to run, we're going to have some optimizations, but we should be looking at optimizations for everything anyways. So, you know, what are we going to not do from an operating cost as the town staff, or actually the town operating budget is going to have to absorb this in some way? So but I think, you know, for a capital expenditure, I think the way that you guys, you know, sort of went through the, the different options here, I think option five kind of gets exactly what, you know, people want. You know, the diving board, I think to the same comments that were made here, you know, I was, I used to dive a lot, but you know, it's just not, you know, I just also ride a bike without a helmet. So there's a lot of things that I don't do. So, you know, I think it's the right place to go, and I think it's the right set of amenities that people have been asking for.
All right. Anybody else have questions, comments for staff? Since Jen alluded to it, anybody want to give public comment on any of these pool proposals? Actual credit to Mr. McCoy's students. All right. Anybody on Zoom want to give public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll circle back.
Final thoughts?
So in terms of like timeline and, you know, what sorts of additional opportunities for the community to kind of learn about this, there's going to be presentation to Park. What sorts of additional community input will be afforded, or at least opportunities to view?
Yeah, we were kind of just planning on the committees. So Park Committee will also visit Sustainability Committee. Anyone else who's interested can ask us to come and talk about it. And then we'll continue to come and update you all and hopefully get some public comment there.
And then in terms of like actually like meeting deadlines and, and executing this, right now, the plan is that we're going to bid out the North Pool contract sometime in the spring, right? And then we'll start construction in the North Pool right at the close of next summer's swim season. So going into the '26 to '27 offseason. And we're going to do the South Pool at the same time. So in order to hit that, that timeline, when are we kind of expecting to see final design documents, contract approvals, all that sort of stuff?
Yes. So we're currently planning on, so BRS, just to talk a little bit about North Pool, they're nearing complete construction documents for that. So that will be ready ahead of time. There's not really much benefit, I think we've talked about it before, of just immediately bidding that out if we want to try to bid them out together. So the plan is for kind of mid to late March for this pool to be fully designed and ready to bid out and North Pool along with it. So we're looking at like, you know, middle to end of March to put it out. All that takes about four or five weeks, and then we would come back to you all. So that would probably be sometime in early May for the construction contract.
All right. Well, it's exciting times. Appreciate all your work on this, and thank you for the creativity with these designs and looking forward to seeing the final documents and moving this project forward.
Great. Thank you so much.
All right. We are on to item six, which is our consent agenda. We do have a proclamation for Veterans Day. Do you want to read that?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes. Right. So whereas the willingness of America's veterans to serve our country has earned them our lasting gratitude, and whereas on this, our nation's 71st Annual Veterans Day observance, we celebrate and honor the patriots who have fought to protect the democratic ideals that are the foundation of our country. Whereas when Armistice ending World War I was signed on November 11, 1918, more than 4.7 million Americans put down their arms and turned to work, to the work of strengthening our nation, the end of that first global conflict was initially commemorated as Armistice Day. In 1954, Congress renamed the day as Veterans Day to recognize all those who have served in our armed forces. And whereas throughout our history, citizens from every corner of America have assumed the duty of military life. And whereas such service has required sacrifice, hardship, endurance, dedication, bravery, courage, and the highest level of patriotism. And whereas those who have served our country deserve special attention. And whereas in respect for the recognition of the contributions our servicemen and women have made, the Congress has provided that November 11 of each year shall be set aside as a legal public holiday to honor veterans. Now therefore be proclaimed, the mayor and town council of the town of Superior, Colorado hereby dedicate and proclaim Tuesday, November 11, 2025, as Veterans Day in the town of Superior, and urge all citizens of Superior to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans and to remember that freedom is not free. And these are the men and women who paid for the freedom all of us enjoy today. Proclaimed this 10th day of November 2025.
All right. Thank you, Jen, and thank you for your service. And at this time, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Serbu. Second from Councilmember Prey Craft. All those in favor? As is unanimously. And we are on to item seven.
Can we take a picture with the veterans that are here?
Yes, let's get a picture of the veterans. Thank you. Thank you all for your service. All right, we're, we're moving on to item seven, which is consideration of approval for ratification of temporary liquor permit for Superior Reserve, Inc., Danny Sue, for Superior Liquor, and approval of a liquor license transfer of ownership. I will now open the public hearing on the application filed by Superior Reserve, Inc., Danny Sue, for ratification of temporary liquor permit for Superior Liquor and approval of liquor license transfer of ownership. Do we have proof of publication? Okay. The procedure to be followed in this case will be as follows. The applicant for the license or the applicant's legal counsel may give an opening statement. Following the opening statement, if any, the applicant and any other person supporting the application may present any evidence supporting the issuance of the license at the conclusion of the applicant's case. Any persons opposing the issuance of the license and any other persons entitled to be heard may present evidence. And then the applicant may then present any rebuttal evidence. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the liquor authority or the form or substance of these proceedings? Seeing, seeing none on Gatwell in the public hearing. Welcome.
I guess this is me.
Okay.
I know. Now you guys get to hear me. An applicant for the transfer of ownership, Danny Sue, with Superior Reserve, Inc., is asking to have that liquor license transferred to him at 100 Superior Plaza Way, currently known as Superior Liquor Market. Law requires a temporary permit to be issued within five business days. That was issued to him on October 1. This item is now being presented as, is not being presented as a consent item due to the extents of derogatory information on the applicant's criminal history. Specifically, the applicant, Danny Sue, also known as, I'm going to murder your name, in Sox So, okay, was convicted of a petty theft offense in 1998. Accordingly, this matter is set for hearing to consider the testimony of the applicant regarding the derogatory information, and so that the authority can ask the applicant questions to satisfy itself as the applicant's good moral character. The applicant has submitted a completed application, and all other criteria for the issuance of the license has been satisfied.
All right.
Can I should add, the applicant might have his attorney on, too. I don't know. We might want to look for her, too.
Yes, my name is, excuse me, Chris Holchen, registration number 8321, representing the applicant. representing the applicant.
All right, welcome, Ms. Holchen. Do you want to go first? Do you want your applicant to present to the council?
Well, we have a little presentation about some, to relay some information. You probably would like to know about the operation of the store. And then I think at the end of the presentation, which will be very short, I'll have Danny speak to the item that appeared on his background report.
That sounds good, the floor is yours.
Danny, are you stepping up to the, oh, there you are. I see you. Danny is the sole managing member of the company, by the way. Danny, tell us a little bit about your prior experience in the liquor industry.
Okay, first of all, it's good evening. As a member of the council, and my name is Danny So. And I'm the new owner of the Superior Liquor. And I thank you for the interest myself in here. So I'm listening to the superior liquor, as you know. And I want to like really plan to continue to operate as a responsible like neighborhood liquor store as it is. And my goal is to like maintain the same store and good reputation and improve the operation and the better customer service and the better community engagement in the Superior. And I am the resident of the Superior, seven years. So that's why I get those ones here too, yeah.
What about the liquor stores, Danny? Tell us.
The liquor store experience, I've been liquor industry like seven years. I used to run the like general manager of the in Portland, the Whipsaw Wine and Sprite. And the other one is in Denver and that's called Colorado Beverage Company, and that's two years and yeah, here I am.
About seven years' experience, have you ever had a liquor ticket?
No, never had a liquor ticket.
And you've taken the liquor license training, correct?
Yep, I do have it training.
And I think that tips certificate is, should be in the file for the authorities. How big is the store?
Store is like nine, 19,800, 200, around there. I'm not exactly that number, but it's just.
And how many employees do you have?
Employee is joining of 25, seven of the full time and rest of them the part time.
And how many of those people have taken the tips training class?
The most of the full timer, they had it. And some of them, only like five or six of them, they don't have it, the license yet. And I mean, certificate yet, but we will provide a class for them to get.
You're going to, you're going to give them the tips training? Is that what you said?
Yeah. Oh, tip train is no longer in place in Colorado anymore.
Oh, I know, it's in person.
Yeah, it has to be like in person class right now. They change it.
Right, right. So you'll be, you'll be getting that done as soon as you can. Do you have a written liquor policy?
Yeah, I do have a written liquor policy. And we have the ID, everyone, and we have to scan ID. And also, if you don't scan ID, at least have to check their face and their expiration date and the birth date. And have to put in the system to get the, buy the liquor or alcohol or just have a course.
And I believe the authority should have a copy of that. I hope Shannon, maybe Shannon was able to get it in. The, what are your business hours?
Business hours right now is eight to 10 during the weekend. And the weekend, I mean, the, when it's Sunday, we closing early at the like nine.
So eight to 10 and eight to nine, right?
Yep.
What is your inventory mix, roughly speaking? 1% is beer, 1% is liquor?
It's about like 20% in the wine and 30% beer and 40% liquor in place.
Okay.
And the rest of them, some miscellaneous items.
It's miscellaneous, okay. And how many security cameras do you have?
We have 36 security camera. As I know, I think I have more than that, but I cannot count it all over.
Okay, okay, well, in the 30s, right? Are you planning to change the store in any way?
No, I don't want to change it like this. I just want to gradually, little bit, little by little. But as for what I see, but right now, it's like, I mean, really good store and really good community store. So I just want to keep as it is and maybe some development for later.
Okay, now, okay, now, talk to us about this petty theft charge that happened. When, you were in college then?
Yeah, I was in college, that was like back then, 20, 30 years ago, something? But I cannot remember. But there was like a bunch of kids was in the, at the Walmart, I believe. And we buy some stuff and then we pay for it. And then when they're driving out and one of our kids, put them on the unpaid item in the cart. So we cut those one and then at back that time, even the $1, we had to fresh charge to have to go to court and explain for those one.
And so you, obviously you satisfied all the requirements to.
Yes. So there was like the, the fine was a court P was like $200. And some of them fine was, I don't remember recall that much, but there was a really small amount, most of them the court P.
But that wasn't you that did it?
No, not in the jail, no.
It was one of the other guys, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, well, if the authority has any questions, they're certainly, Danny will certainly be willing to answer them.
All right, questions from council?
Couple of questions. First of all, thank you, I appreciate your application. And Superior Liquor has been real steadfast in supporting sports teams in the community. And I'm curious to hear what your vision is for continuing that or not? If it's not in your business plans, I totally respect that.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, my, my plan was like active with like parts to part of the community. And I mean, we also put nearby like all those like businesses can do. And we will, we only participate in any like local event for those one as much as we can.
Okay. Thank you for that. And then what is, have you thought about what your plan is going to be with the existing employees? Are they going to continue to work or is there?
Yeah, we will keep as much as we can.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Additional questions? I'll just echo that and just say, you know, Pete Messimer and the entire team behind Superior Liquor has been a real partner here in the community with the Superior Chamber of Commerce and then also supporting our schools as well with spirit nights and things like where the PTO will have a spirit night where, you know, a certain percentage of the sales will be donated to the school to fund, you know, various activities for the kids. So not telling you how to.
Continue to do that.
And not telling you how to do your business, but that's certainly been a valuable, you know, contribution to the community. And, you know, if there's, if there's ever been a liquor store that is run the right way, Superior Liquors is that store. It's like, and it's been an absolute like beacon in the community. You know, and I know a lot of liquor stores get a bad rap that they, there's concerns about what it does to the neighborhood. But like Superior Liquor is a destination, you know, where not only do they have fantastic inventory where people are, you know, you want really good wine, you go to Superior Liquor, a great service, knowledgeable staff, but then a valuable community partner. So I just hope that you continue to run the store in a similar manner that it continues to be a good community asset.
Yep, I'm, like I say, I'm the resident in here in the Superior. So I really support, want to support the community and the city. Yes, we do, we will.
That's good to hear.
I'm glad that Mayor Laces brought that up because I will say, being involved with the Superior Chamber of Commerce, that's a really supportive group. And because Superior Liquor has been such a great community partner, when liquor went into the grocery stores and there's other liquor stores obviously to choose from, I know a lot of residents and specifically chamber members choose to shop at Superior Liquor because it's always been so supportive and such a great community partner. So I'm relieved to hear that you plan on still doing that.
All right, well, thank you.
All right, any additional questions for the applicant? All right, thank you for your presentation. Any members of the town council have questions for staff? All right, seeing none. Applicant can have a final rebuttal. I'll, I do have the opportunity to open it up for public comment, right? So why don't we open up for public comment now? Anybody in the public like to give public comment on this liquor licensing application? All right, seeing none. Anybody on Zoom like to give public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Sue, for final closing thoughts.
Well, I'm really thank you for seeing the, all the community here. And I'm really glad to be here. And well, we support this community and this city as much as we can as our liquor store and the residents. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. And now your counsel, Ms. Holchen, you have anything further to add?
No, I think that we've shown that the store is going to be run in accordance with the law and that Danny's a qualified operator and is certainly going to stay, keep this store in the position that's been in the community and highly regarded. So we just request that you approve the permanent license.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and then discussion.
I just want to say that I am so sorry that you have to explain that story. And I'm really grateful that I don't have to talk about the things that happened 30 years ago in my life. So thank you for being here and we're excited for you to keep the business going the way it is.
Yeah, I'll echo that, you know, we all make mistakes in our life and there are opportunities to demonstrate who we are. And obviously you've demonstrated that over the past 30 plus years. And the fact that you've been in this business without any infractions, I think is the most relevant aspect in terms of considering this application. I, I don't have any concerns with approving the liquor license transfer. All right, that said, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to, what do we need, a motion to approve the transfer?
Yeah, Shannon put some language in there. I would just move to approve the application for liquor license transfer for Danny Sue. And it's in, it's in the cover memo.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the application for liquor license transfer for Danny Sue, Superior Reserve, Inc., for the Superior Liquor Market Retail Liquor Store. Second. And we got a motion from Mayor Laces, a second from Councilmember Foster. We'll do roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Foster?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Mayor Laces?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Craycraft?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Yes.
All right, passes unanimously, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I, I just want to say that special thanks to Shannon for all her help with this application. We really appreciate it.
She is fantastic, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on to item eight, which is consideration of a resolution of the town council of the Town of Superior license agreements to place fences in public right of way adjacent to 205 Third Avenue and 212 West William Street. And we've got Renee Stabros here. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and, good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Renee Stabros. I'm the Planning and Building Director for the town. I don't know if we can bring up, that's okay. I just want to be able to show you where we're talking about this evening. So we're here this evening to discuss two separate license agreements, one for 205 Third Avenue and the other for 212 West William. They're adjacent to each other across from, the street from each other on Third Avenue in original town. Both applicants are here this evening to speak to you before discussion begins, I believe. I'll show you this, this is, there's two, two, both applicants put up fences after they rebuilt after the Marshall Fire. Both letters that they submitted state that they called the town staff for direction on whether or not permits were required. At the time, permits were not required. We sent via email the applicable fence code that discusses where fences are and aren't allowed. And both applicants built their fences off of their property line. So this one here is the 205 Third Avenue, Mr. Espinoza's property. And the area here in red is the area outside of the property line that we're talking about this evening. On Mr. Espinoza's property, there is a sewer line that runs from north to south down the Third Avenue right of way, but inside of his fence line. So the concern here is that public work staff don't have immediate access to their service lines. If there's an emergency, they would need to access those and would need to perhaps mess up fences or landscaping that's been put within that area. And because of the fence, it's not easily accessible immediately from the right of way. On, oops. This is 212 West William. It's kind of flipped, so third hour, Third Avenue goes north south. It looks like it goes east west in this plan. But this is the area in question here. It's directly across the street this way from Mr. Espinoza's property. The New Studders live here. And similar to Mr. Espinoza, they contacted the town, asked for fence information and proceeded to build their fence off of their property line. And this evening, we're here to look at whether or not they can maintain their fences in the right of way through a license agreement process that would allow them to keep their fence up under certain agreements that we would have access to our services that are in the right of way. And these agreements expire in December of, December 31st of 2030, at which time the fences in the right of way become legally non-conforming, which means that if they want to replace the fence after that time, they would need to come back to you all and ask for permission. They can maintain it in accordance with that afterwards. And before that expiration, they can replace the fence as needed, as though if it were a permitted item. I'll invite the applicants up here to speak to you and then perhaps may take questions after that, if that makes sense. Okay.
That sounds good.
Mr. Espinoza?
Absolutely.
Hi, thanks for having us tonight. And my wife Katie here also joined coming from work. So she was just here, just in case. But I had enough time to change my pants, but not my top. So, yeah, I just want to say thank you. We've worked with Matt, we've met with Mark and you all have been very helpful in helping us navigate the process, which has been happening since April. And, you know, as Renee said, we, you know, while, before we did any landscaping, any fencing at all, I went on the website for Town of Superior. I was looking everywhere for fence guidance. We started following, like filling out a Louisville thing. We were, you know, really confused about that. And so when it came to submitting that, I contacted the town and the town was like, well, we don't require a permit process. And so at that point, I got the information and we built. And so at that point, I got the information and we built all of our landscaping and all of our fencing according to that guidance. And we did everything really to the T. We followed the transparency guidance, the way that it's supposed to step on elevation, we did that. And the rest of it's all according on to the property line. It was this one area here where we consider this the front of our house, just like Mr. Espinoza's property. And so what happened here is since this was our front, one of the, you know, according to the guidance, it talks about a 12-inch setback from the sidewalk. And so I was very confused on what that meant. And then my conversations with the town was that it needed to be 12 inches from the sidewalk. We were a little bit confused on what that meant. I said, is that from the pan? It was confirmed, yes. And so that's what we did. So this was just, you know, this 60-foot area fence was mostly just, you know, we were doing it 12 inches from the sidewalk. And in this case, it's about 18, 19 inches from the sidewalk, just to be safe. So this was a case where we thought we were doing everything right. We then built the fence and built all the sidewalk and we used recycled materials that, from different lots. We put in a, a circle dedicated to the Marshall Fire using a flagstone that survived the fire without even being damaged at all. So it's really cool. And so if we have to move these, we got to dig up that whole entire circle of life. We got to dig up all these fence posts, tear up all the landscaping. And it just seems like a really terrible waste of resources, energy and everything. So I will stop there and hand it over to my
Partner.
Partner, good neighbor, Mr. Espinoza, who I've, I've never called you that before. Here's Gil.
Yeah, like Mike said, my property is a little, if you think about it, my side yard is actually my front yard, right? So I face out on, onto Third Avenue and the same with
We can go back to yours, so you can
Well, screw it all up.
There you go.
Okay. So, you know, mine, this is the sidewalk and I've been in this town since 87, when, when it was dirt roads. And when they built the pans, they said, well, what about sidewalks? Well, those are your sidewalks. The pan runs, if you've all been to Old Town, there's a little gutter part. And then inside of that, that's the sidewalk. So we had a strong fence come down, look at it, and it was recommended by my builder. And my builder said, well, this girl's really knows what's happening. So she went, got the ordinances, not really ordinances, they're guidelines. One says that you can come 12 inches from the sidewalk and the other one says on the lot line. So when we were trying to find some guidance, we didn't really have that. So we understood that there's a paradox in that because they both say this, one says on the lot line, the other one says 12 inches. So one thing that I got from my, my builder, because Ernie had left, so we hired a bunch of consultants. They came in and sometimes in the building, we would get different questions, I mean, different answers. My builder said, these guys are driving me nuts. So when we looked at the fence, we figured, well, we're going to open ourselves up to see what, know where it goes. So we, we built it where we thought it was most attractive. And he did the same thing with him, with his property. With mine, we have, one of the issues that has come up was this meter, I mean, this water meter right there. It's not difficult to get to because there's, this is a four-foot fence. There's no fence here. I have a pillar. When you mentioned April, that was a year ago, April. So we went through all the certificate of occupancies. We had all the electricians come in. I have pillars here, right, right in front of this. And then pillars here, here and here, that are for my mailboxes. They want your mailboxes out on the street. So it would take five minutes to take four bolts, two bolts off here, two bolts off there to have access to that water meter pit. So it sounds to me like it, I want you to understand, it's real easy to do. And, and I understand if that is an issue, I'm totally compliant to do whatever I need to do to let, to let you get in there. We also invited the Assistant City Manager, you, City Manager, the mayor, and who else was it? The three guys we invited to come to the house. We met on the backyard. So one thing that I've always done is try to establish a relationship with the city. And we both talked about, well, we got this issue going on, but you got the city council has been, well, we really want to try to get you guys back in there. So we, we did the very best we could. We talked about planning, about what our yards are going to look like, make sure it looks right, make sure it's detailed so that it's attractive. So then everything's in and then we get this, you guys get it from, from, everybody blames, what's her name? Jamie? You know, looks at her, she's the one who's taking all the heat. But we understand that it's coming from Renee and everybody else, you know, that you guys got to move this. You, we talked to you about it. You were open at first and then we talked to you about it. And so it was like, okay, this is going to be an easy thing. You guys come down and then we find out, oh, no, we got to do this meeting, a high-end meeting and then project our issues about what we thought, defend ourselves. And when we thought it was just going to be, just sign it up. The other thing that we got is a revocable agreement. We thought we were going to get an agreement that, like a treaty with us. And in my family, we went through the Spanish Land Grands in New Mexico. They took the property, right? So I'm going, mhm. And then the next thing is like, and we talked about this over the fence. I'm like, well, when are they going to get on me about my flag? Because it's an American flag. So there's a whole bunch of stuff going in this and it's like, wait a minute, we did everything to be as, well, I'm starting to get this thing because, you know, this is not a real community about, maybe you think it is, but, and I thought before it is, but now I'm thinking, I don't know what's, what's happening here. So we're kind of upset that it's a revocable agreement. So then we went around looking at, all over town. We went to behind everybody's, you know, in the alleys. We said, well, man, that property is all the way out in the alley. Well, I gave up eight feet of my alley that I could have built on my fence in the alley like Eddie Sharps. So my property goes over here. He's trying to figure out stuff about what, what he can build. Mike has always said, I've done the very best. I held all this stuff in and we, we spent all this time. It even came to the point that Katie, in tears, saying, I want to leave. I don't want to go through this. You know, so here I am, I'm a retired veteran in the fire department and everything. I've been here forever. Me not Boulder, I was raised in Boulder, right? That's when it all kind of comes together. So we're trying to figure out, so what's really happening here? And so then when we were coming here to get a revocable agreement, when we, in our discussions, we thought we're, we're, we're in good. We went and looked at the back alley over here. The fence that the city has is 12 inches from the pan. We went over to the houses for sale over here. It's like 20 inches from the pan. We looked at other properties in our alley, their, their fence goes all the way out to the alley. So there, there are a lot of inconsistencies. So what Mike and I are trying to say is that we want to be, we are, this is our hometown. When she's thinking about leaving, wants to cry about, what are, what are we going to do? The tension, this guy's high-order tension. You know, I don't, I don't know. And I'm like, let's, we'll see what, we'll see what's going to happen. So we're asking for permission to leave our property lines where they're at. You have, I'll take down 12 feet of that fence for you to come in to change the water meter. I understand that. I'm a firefighter, retired firefighter. I know I want to get in there. Any firefighter is going to come into my property, we'll just jerk it out and turn off the water. I mean, if you have to. And so I think we thought we had an agreement that, that we didn't have to come and do this meeting with you guys. So we don't know what your recommendations are going to be, but if it's anything other than, okay, we, we came to an agreement. These guys presented their, their opinion. We didn't drag anybody else's properties. You know, we've seen it. We're thinking, should we go tattletale on everybody? We're not going to do that because we're neighbors, right? This is our town, we're a community and we're not going to do that. I was raised on Goss Street in Boulder and that was, they called it Sin City, it was the ghetto. We didn't even know it was a ghetto. But we, we mowed our lawns, we cleaned up our yards, we shoveled the snow for our neighbors and we do that now. We take care of each other, you know, all the way down to Eddie Sharps. We're wondering who's going to come in between us. But we're wondering, what else, what else are you, is the city, through the law, going to say that we could do this? Through codes and all that, maybe, yeah, you could do that. But what's the right thing to do when you didn't give us any guidance in the beginning? And we, and we, and we worked with you guys to say, okay, we'll give you a break too. So that's, that's our position. We'll throw ourselves at the mercy of the court, but we might, we might not like it. And if we don't like it, then we're, then I'm going to wait and see what's going to happen. But, but we do, we did our very best. Where's his property? So, so the one thing for you to know, this, my property is right here. His property is there. When you come around, this is all open, mine's all open. So it doesn't, it's not those big old high fences that lock you out where you can't, where you can't see in. Everything is, everything's open. And my back fence is a box fence. So you can look, people come by and look at my property all the time, right? You can see his property through the back. So I think we complement each other. We did the very best we could. We were honest in, in what we did. We weren't trying to steal any property from somebody. And we made our, our front yards look as, as nice as we could. What else?
I'm going to come up now and just say one thing, once you're done.
Well, you can come up. Yes, you can. Want me to stand with support with you?
Since Gil, Gil, you just made me want to, I want to introduce myself too. I'm Katie Newstutter and thank you guys for getting me out of the house today. Got a babysitter, Mike had to randomly work late and we're like, how are we going to do this? We have to like be here today. So thank you for getting me out and it was nice to like kind of be a part of one of these meetings. The South Pole one, also very cool because we have two little guys, so we, we enjoy. And like my daughter Piper, she's going to be in kindergarten next year. Hope that she's like going to be a superior elementary girl. We're really part of the community. Mike's been in Colorado 25-plus years, works strictly for nonprofits. So we're working for the Red Cross right now, had a Red Cross event tonight. I'm a, I've been 11 years in a special ed teaching job in the community. So we really like care about the community, we care about others, you know? And I think like, what I want to say is that, you know, we're like, we're people that want to just do the right thing. And like, so when Mike's super diligent, built us a house, the house back somehow, like in the two-year timeframe we had and really underinsured. We bought the house in 2020, big mortgage, just like, you know, all the things. So he, he got us back and, you know, that last stage of like, we want to make it look nice, you know? Like we didn't, we, we like had to use our own personal money to buy this landscaping and the fencing, but that was important to us because we wanted to look nice for our community. And so, yeah, we are glad that we were able to do that. You know, we, we really wanted to follow the rules and thought we were following the rules, but now looking that like, you know, we see the, the issue now, you know, when it was brought to our attention. But I think that the, the case is like to, you know, that yard, my, my kids play in daily. Our dog comes out and sits outside with us when we play, you know? We didn't build a backyard. We have no landscaping in the backyard yet. We don't have the funding for that quite yet. So, you know, to, to uproot the fence, it's not going to go back down because it's, we don't have the funding for that. You know, we're going to, you know, ruin a big part of honestly what's making us feel a little more comfortable being back. So we do like the community. We want to raise our family here and I think we can. But I, I just want you guys to consider that piece too, that we're rule follower. We follow the rules. We like try to help others and we, you know, honestly, you know, the, the where the fence lies is what we thought was the right thing. We would not have done it any differently if not. I mean, we can pay tens of thousands of dollars to uproot it in our landscaping, be all crazy with sprinkler systems that we paid for and we can just like have, throw the wood away and the materials away, but that's what it's going to be. We're not going to like be able to rebuild a fence. We're not going to have a safe spot for our kids in the front yard. And I think too, the revocable, or the revocable piece for Mike and I, it's completely fine. That fence is going to have to be redone in some time anyway, but just to get us past this pump that we still feel like we're in, like hanging out in Lafayette while we like built our house felt like way more comfortable and normal than this. And we've been back two-plus years. So it just, we still need a little more time. So if we could just like have this like support from you guys, you know, we know it's revocable. So hey, like we need to change it up before the five years. We're more than willing. We just want this off our shoulders for right now. So thank you guys, thanks for having us and getting me out of the house.
Thank you, Kate, Mike and Gil.
I'm not easy with revocable.
We understand.
But, but the deal is, the deal is, these are my neighbors. They're starting, they have two little kids. They're at one end of their life and then I'm at the other end of my life. I took all my money and put it in, this is my statement. That's the Espinoza house. When I cook out, that's part of what I left in, in Louis, in Lafayette and in, and in Boulder, right? I love these guys. I love these guys.
Let me, let me just add a little color. So first off, thank you, Mike, Katie and Gil for, for being here. I'm so sorry that you guys had to go through what you had to go through with the Marshall Fire and I think that you are extremely courageous and resilient and I respect you immensely. What I wanted to just give a little color for, for, for the council, just to make sure everybody kind of understands kind of where, how we got here. I had the opportunity to meet with, with Mike and with Gil. We kind of talked about how, you know, it was a crazy time coming after, you know, trying to recover from the Marshall Fire. That's like the biggest understatement that I can make, right? We hired additional staff to try to make it easier and our kind of guiding light here on the council was let's do whatever we can to get people home as quickly as possible, as easily as possible, as cheaply as possible. Let's all work collaboratively, remove red, red tape, do whatever needs to, to happen. I think throughout that process, you know, maybe we had, you know, new staff who didn't understand, you know, what exactly the, the code required. But I think we have two residents here who, through no fault of their own, were given direction from staff or from the consultants that, that we were working with, from SafeBilt, that they could put the, the fence where they put the fence. So they put the fence there and now, you know, turns out that, that we've got an issue with it. So when we discussed this, there was the concern, which is a legitimate concern from Public Works in terms of like access to the water tap and, you know, other, you know, easement type utilities that we may have to access. And in the event that if there's a need to get to the water tap or something like that and that, whether it's an easy removal or not, you know, there's the possibility for some damage that could occur to the fences. And both the Newstutters and Mr. Espinoza understand that if damage occurs in that situation, that the town would not be responsible for the cost associated with fixing the fence if we needed to, to access the water tap. But when we had the conversations about putting together like a license agreement for them to keep the fences that are currently installed in the right-of-way and avoid, you know, the slippery slope argument of like other people asking for this, kind of the concern was, you know, we don't want this to start like a domino and everybody saying, oh, well, I want a bigger fence now too. And I think that, at least from my perspective, here we have a unique situation, two individuals relying on the representations from, from staff who, who built it versus somebody who doesn't have that same situation and also them being fire victims that I think we should just kind of do what we need to do to, to make, make things work here. So my question for, for staff and for, for town attorney is, where did the idea of a revocable license come about? Because when we originally had a conversation about this, we were envisioning a license agreement that would run with the land that if they sold the house, that, you know, this wouldn't be a problem for a future owner, that this is just kind of settling it once and for all. So can, can you shine some light on where the revocable license?
I would direct that question to staff, yeah.
So the, the biggest reason is that it's still actually right-of-way. So should the town, it's, it's town property and we'd be giving, in essence, them
And we'd be giving in essence them our property without the ability to then expand the roadway, build sidewalks, whatever. I mean, in the future, we're, we're speaking future here. So.
Well, and also there's utilities.
And, and utilities, yeah.
Okay. All right, so. All right, so if we made it an irrevocable license and then we needed to access the utilities, then we would need, we would need to get additional permission from the license holder?
Yeah, and an irrevocable license agreement is essentially just a regular old easement. So this is what makes it a license agreement is kind of that revocable temporary nature. So it's a little redundant, but that's why they wanted to go this way.
Is there, like if we made it like an actual easement, but we had access and, and all the utilities had access, is that another way to? I guess I'm just looking for a way to solve this on a, in a permanent basis without?
If, if it's permanent and it's an easement, then it's their property and it's no longer right of way, which creates issues for Public Works and management of their, yeah.
I mean, I think the challenge is we don't know what the future holds. I mean, are we going to build sidewalks in original town? We don't have storm drainage in original town currently either, which is a big issue. So if we give away that property and we needed to do that in the future, we'd have to purchase it back or get additional easements in that regard. And it's not only our utilities, there need to be utility easement with every utility that has utilities along the street.
Okay.
So like gas, electric, cable, they use the public right of way.
Hypothetically, if there's other properties that have this, what happens to those if there is a sidewalk or is it like?
I'm not aware of any other properties. I know we've gotten dozens of requests to put fences in the right of way and we've denied those requests. A lot of them before permits or after permits. I'm aware of one property on Coal Creek Drive or West Williams Street that extended. And I know we worked out the Sagamore fences backing up to 76th Street. The alleys are different. We have a 15 foot right of way in the alley, so the fence could go right up to the concrete alley. There's no right of way outside of where the concrete ends. In terms of the alleys, it's just the streets that are different.
Brandon, if, if town staff needed to access the water meter, I don't see anything in the revocable license that says we have to give them like five days notice or 24 hours notice. So would we have the ability to just go in and?
I think we put in there that we would give them unless it's emergency situation. I don't have it in front of me.
Sorry, maybe.
It's, it's in there. It's something about.
The problem is if we have, so the sewer line is right underneath the concrete pan on the west side. So if there ever was an issue there, we had to dig it up or the meter, we'd have to tear the fence down and then the license agreement put it on the property owner then to put it back up and they'd be responsible for all that. But we would give notice if we were doing, like meters, we have to dig up meters all the time because they get covered and buried. So we would give notice for something like that. But if we had to tear it up for emergency, we would just have to do it.
Okay. And this might be a question for Renee. When a home is getting built or rebuilt, who's responsible for knowing the location of the property lines? And who's responsible for making the location of the property lines known before or during construction?
So surveyors go out and survey the property and set pins before construction begins on any of the properties in town. So you'll see the, there's like stakes with like pink plastic on them. Typically those are like a property corner.
And we also, part of, part of the CO inspections is make sure all property pins are locatable and done. So you can't get a CO unless your property pin's been located by the property owner surveyor.
And did the, were those property line surveys markers installed? I guess, I don't know if that's the right phrase, but installed in, in these two cases?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
If, if there's a revocable piece of it, like when it transfers title, like if they sell their house and transfers title, the revocable piece just rides along with it?
Yeah, so the license agreement isn't recorded. It's between two people. It's actually not really between the property at all. It references the property because that's what we're talking about here. But it's not, it's not like any other kind of land document that you usually deal with. It's just between two people, more like a contract. I'll just leave it at that.
And the town would, so it would do that with the next owner if that?
They would become legally, legally non-conforming like it will in December 30, after December 31st of 2030. The new owners might, there, the paperwork should have that. So if you get a title commitment when you sell your prop, when you purchase a property, the title commitment is going to say that there's this agreement won't actually.
Depends on if you record it.
Yeah.
And right now this is not being recorded. And we can, you can, you can record anything you want and it, and then it'll be tied to it more. But it's, it's not really, that's how this is contemplated right now.
If nothing's done, I don't know if it's seven years or 10 years to that property, doesn't it become like use of the property over a certain amount of time?
I don't remember the timeline.
Makes it become that person's property?
Yeah, that's a.
That's a real thing.
Yeah, I mean, the license agreement helps with that.
It's usually longer than that. It's like 30 years.
Is it 30?
It's like, yeah, it's a long time. It's like, I think it's 16. It might be 38. I don't know. It's long. And it's also, I don't know, we don't need to have a property law lesson, but it's, this is, this makes that more difficult to implicate.
And the legal non-conforming use, that can continue. It just can't, you can't modify it, right? You can't change it. Right? So like, it's not like they, after 2030, they need to rip the fence up. It can stay in the same place. You just can't modify changes.
Yeah.
Brandon, you had mentioned some other people had asked for building fences in the right of way. Was that before these or after these or both? Both. So I, I mean, if you look around original town and see how many people have built, rebuilt and then built fences, they all came to us at some point and asked how and what requirements there were for rebuilding their fences. So I can't tell you how many of them asked specifically, but a number, a lot of people wanted to know if they could build it because they have these areas. Not all of the properties in original town have this ability, but these aren't the only ones that do. So there were other people that asked for that and we said no. And then following our permit process, so we require fence permits now. We did have someone request it off their property, then have to amend their application to put it on the property line. They built it off the property line and then they asked what their neighbors did in order to have their fences off of their property line. And we uh, told them about this process, that they were asking for this process to go by. But because they permitted their fence, they don't have the same ability to ask for this because their permit documents specifically state that the fence has to be on their property line and not off their property line.
When, when these came up, were they given, I'm looking at what was included in the packet, that section 16 dash 22 dash 10, the general provisions saying no fence hedge or wall may extend beyond the property line. And then section 11 to 150, it's unlawful to place permanent, temporary building structures, fences, blah, blah, blah. The only exception is being landscaping. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out how we got here. And I know it seems like there was miscommunication and maybe SafeBilt wasn't.
I don't know how the miscommunication happened, but obviously there was a miscommunication. I, I definitely believe that had they understood the requirements, that neither of them would have put their fences where they are today. So I don't disagree with that statement at all. All I can say is that we gave them the code that you're looking at. And they shared that we gave them the code that you're looking at. And then they built their fences not in accordance with that code, according to how we approve the code. Okay.
But they also both said that they built it in reliance on what our staff or our, you know, SafeBilt team told them.
And I don't know who they talked to. And I mean, like I said, I, I don't, I don't know how to say that they didn't do what they said they did. They probably did and they probably received feedback from someone. I just don't know what that would have been, other than pointing to the section of the code for fences, because that's what we do.
Renee, do we have any verifiable documentation in these conversations? Was it done via email, a letter?
I don't, I don't know. Do you all remember if, if there's back and forth emails? I mean, we had emails.
I was going up there, you were up there.
Yeah.
You were up there, I talked to you and then there was another lady, I don't know her name. She was, she would go down and have a cigarette every once in a while. And she said, there's no building permits. And so I said, okay, so my, our fence lady went up, she got it and looked at it. So there's a paradox. One says on the, on the lot line and the other one says 12 inches from the fence. So we went, well, let's put it here. And so then we got her certificate of occupancy. You guys all came to my house, saw the fence, saw everything that was there. Nobody ever said anything. Nobody said anything to them when they got there. I saw that flower, you know, it's big now, but you know, uh, so it was like, and I don't want, see, I can't push blame off on you, you know, or anybody else, because there was that, when you'd mentioned earlier that what the SafeBilt was, everybody was floating around and in my building was going, going crazy. We said, wait a minute. And so we said, all right, we have, we have this issue going on, so uh, I'm not, my dad always said, if I point a finger at you, there's a three pointing back. And I think we're both, I think it's a contributory thing. How did it happen? We were doing the best we could. You guys were trying to do the best you could. And most, and I, and to back you up Renee though, I think a lot of those other fences came in after we had our stuff. And, and even, even after they have gone, we've seen some fences that's gone up and they're, they're following that back of line, you know? But, but Jamie's the one that's going to be running around. She's going to get everybody angry at her. But like, I think now you do have that in, in force that this is the fences go on the lot lines, you know? That's, that's what it says now. That you needed, and we even talked about it, take that thing out that says 12 inches from the sidewalk. That shouldn't even be in there. That ought to be gone. So everybody knows it goes on the lot lines. But we mentioned that a year ago when we, when we were trying to figure out what we were doing, you know, so.
Is that actually written 12 inches from the sidewalk? Is that actually?
It's in there.
From the sidewalk and it's, you, you should have it, 12 inches from the sidewalk. The other thing too is those utilities running the alley. And from my getting access to my water meter, it's right there, you can get it. And, and then going to my gas meter from, from the street, it's 12 feet from, from the street, from that, from that sidewalk to the wall where my house is at. So that's also very.
I can't see what the property line is.
There's nothing restricted. The, the electrical, the Comcast stuff, all of that stuff runs in the alley, you know? So we could debate, I think, but my brother here, he's like, I just don't see too much because he patters, you know, so.
The sidewalk language is in there because Rock Creek. So a lot of the Rock Creek properties go all the way up to the sidewalk. So the 12 inches is, and that's why the conditions are, it means it has to be all those requirements. And we've denied fences in town property in Rock Creek too, with some of the rebuilds, especially those corner lots that have a larger right of way. Cause we've gotten some requests, I could think of two.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I just, I just want to make sure we're not talking hyperbole here. Is, is Jamie finding other examples of fences being built into the right of way?
These are the only two that she's pointed to that have come to this point. There's been others that have had to fix fences, not a whole lot. Are you, I don't.
Your fence back here is right up against the sidewalk.
If, if it's on the property line though, then it would be permitted. There's fences on property lines all, all around.
This, this fence is out here in the alley across from Gossip Park. That fence is not, I don't, I'm done.
I just want to make sure there's not level of precedent where everyone's building over the property line. And it's, if it's, if it's just these two properties, and I think there's one other one that has built beyond it, but I think that's an issue that, uh, that's in violation, correct?
These are the only two properties. The one that you mentioned has been corrected.
Okay.
Or is in the process.
And the ones on Coal Creek that do have their fences closer towards the sidewalk, that's a completely different line item, right? That's, that's not the same way as this, correct?
Coal Creek.
On Coal Creek, there's some of the houses on Coal Creek have fences at the front that look like they're a little bit, they're a little bit further forward than they could be if they were in a different location. But those are, those are fine, right? Otherwise Jamie probably would have flagged those.
Correct.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure we're not seeing any other precedents over and over of this happening. Okay.
So just a quick comment. I mean, Mark, I really appreciate all the work you've done here because, you know, I remember what our job and our direction was, go as quickly as possible. We hired, we happened to hire SafeBilt like a couple of weeks before the fire. There's SafeBilt people from all over the country reviewing documents. Some of them couldn't even find Superior on a map if you asked them to. But they were off trying to review drawings. They're interpreting the code. And I think Brandon's comment about the code being more specific to Rock Creek is, is very, you know, pressing here because like, oh yeah, okay, fine. 12 inches, like not realizing that OT might be different. And you guys took that and, and built the fence. And I can see the drawings that you submitted to the staff, whether or not that was truly reviewed. And by staff, I'm saying, you know, SafeBilt because they are an extension of staff, right? So I can't fault anybody in the room for where we ended up, right? And it's just, it's where we ended up. And I think no one would have done this intentionally because it would be a very different, you know, set of facts if this was intentional, that was deliberate. There would not, you guys would not be in here actually asking for, for forgiveness. You'd be yelling and screaming at us and all sorts of other things, which I'm surprised you're not doing, because you should be, right? I mean, this is our fault. We screwed up. We, we had every opportunity to have you fix this and we didn't. And now we've got these two pieces of paper that are kind of a fix. And yeah, I get the fact that it creates precedent. This was an unprecedented fire and we've made mistakes across the board. So let's just fix this, go home and let you guys live in peace with your house and not talk about this ever again. Like I can't see any other reason to debate this for another minute because we're not going to make you pay, you know, pull up the fences and move it. This is silly because it's our fault, right? Unless we're ready to pay for that, which I don't think anybody's ready for, there, there's no reason to do this. And I think we're here because the facts and circumstances throughout, you know, post-fire was let's do everything we can. Let's rely on outsiders to help us do this. Let's assume they understand what they're doing, which, you know, in hindsight, maybe not everybody from SafeBilt was fully ramped up on everything when we needed them to be. So we are, you know, unfortunately a couple of things happened. But both your homes are amazing. I think you guys are going to live great lives there. I want you to continue staying here. Please don't think of leaving. And I think we, we need to find a way to sort this out because this is, this is just silly, unfortunately.
I, I agree with you Neil. And I'll, I'll just say, I, I don't actually think that this sets a precedent. I think that this is, you know, the way it's drafted, it's a, actually like an elegant solution to like a, a messy, you know, complicated problem. But I appreciate everybody kind of working, putting their heads together to kind of come up with the best solution that can work. I think it's in everybody's best interest for not, nobody to rip out the fences and just to be able to carry on, not incur additional costs, not spend additional, you know, staff time. And we have this process in place to, to deal with these two outliers. And at the end of the day, like what this town did is we bent over backwards to get people home. And like, let's just continue doing that to further that recovery process. And this is just like one more piece of that puzzle. So I'm fully supportive of moving forward, approving the license agreements tonight and then not bothering you guys anymore with anything. And I appreciate staff trying to figure out how to make this all work. So thank you. Any, anything further?
Nick, I've got a question just for, since others were denied the same thing when they asked, does this open us up to any sort of them coming after us saying we're giving special treatment? Or if they were allowed, why can't I do that? Or I'm going to do that now and ask for the same thing? Like I just want to make sure this isn't opening a can of worms for the ones that were told no.
I can't predict what people are going to do, but I don't think so.
You know, I think we've gotten to a good place on this. I don't think it was anybody's fault. I think it was just a misunderstanding. And I think the big, one of the big things here as far as a misunderstanding goes is, just as Mr. Espinoza said, that people see those pans and sidewalks, you know? So when they read the code, they see 12 inches back from the sidewalk. And I think that's what happened here.
All right, like to open it up for public comment. Anybody like to give public comment on this agenda item? Seeing nobody in council chambers. Anybody on Zoom like to give public comment? All right, seeing none. Public comment is closed. Further discussion? Seeing none.
Just a more question, might, might be for Matt. Given the situation that we're in now with how the code is worded, have, have we contemplated amending that language so it's a little bit more clear and more explicit for?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, it's something that I'm sure staff's already looked at and talked to them specifically about that, but we have a permit process in place now, which is going to prevent this from happening in the future. Okay.
All right, thanks. All right, any further questions, comments? All right, I'll make a motion to approve Town of Superior Resolution Number R-90 Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior approving a revocable license agreement with Gilbert A. Espinoza.
Second.
Got a motion from Mayor Lasis and a second from Councilmember Shaw. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Lasis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
Abstain.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Foster?
No.
Councilmember Craycraft?
No.
You can't abstain.
I've had a discussion with the applicant regarding, well, I, I can't render a yes or no on this, so.
It's also not a public hearing, it's just a regular old agreement, which also makes this a little weird and different from the other land use stuff we do. You're not quasi judicial right now, you're just, you guys as town council.
So I guess you could just leave the dais, right, and not be present?
Yeah. You've already commented, though, so you're already kind of here. You're already locked in. Sorry, man.
Well, I think, just to be fair, and then I'm not playing favorites, I have to say no then.
What's the call?
Four to three, four yeses, three no's.
All right, passes four to three. All right, I'll make a motion to approve Town Superior Resolution Number R-91 Series 2025, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Superior approving a revocable license agreement with Michael and Catherine Newstetter.
Second.
Motion from Mayor Lasis, second from Councilmember Shaw. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Craycraft?
No.
Councilmember Foster?
No.
Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Cowish?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Serbu?
No.
Mayor Lasis?
Yes. All right, passes four, three. Congratulations, thank you for your patience, and good luck. All right, it is 8:18, and we're going to take a 10-minute recess, we'll be back at 8:28.
No, thank you, sir.
Sorry, I still love you. I'm just worried about, I'm worried about future, so keep in touch, though, please, okay? Keep me posted.
All right, we are back and we're on to item nine on our agenda, which is the Wehe Property Concept Plan with Carmel.
Good evening. We are here this evening. Again, my name's Renee Stavros, Planning and Building Director for the town. And now we are talking about the property at 7494 Marshall Road. The applicant is here this evening to present a concept plan to you and hear your discussion with them. The property is located south of Marshall Road, south of 36th, west of 76th, just south, as you can see in this concept site plan, of the CDOT property and north, this is Guardian Storage. They're proposing 376 units across 15 separate three-to-four-story buildings with a clubhouse. The property itself is 12 and a half acres. And I will let them tell you all about it. I just wanted to give an introduction. This is Carmel is the applicant. They're under contract with the owner of the property and they will share with you all of their plans. And then you can talk to them and they can talk to you and we'll see what happens. And you can let me know if you have questions. I will be here.
We appreciate that. All right, welcome.
Okay, let's see, am I doing this right? Okay. Well, good evening. My name is Jeff Panic. I'm with Carmel Partners. Good to see you all again. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm joined by Harris Griswold on our development team here, who's frankly going to be doing the lion's share of the presentation tonight. We also have Nathan and Jim with our design team here, KTGY and Civil Resources, who can answer questions and talk through anything we get through tonight. It's hard for me to believe, but we've actually been working with the property owner here for just about two years now on this property and discussions about what the future plans for this may be, how kind of a development might take shape here. But as you know, this is part of the Boulder County and requires an annexation into the town of Superior. So we've been carefully following the town's comprehensive plan process. And I really appreciate staff, Matt, Martin, Renee, Jeffrey, the whole team, the Cushing Trail team and their engagement with us and allowing us to get more information about this and stay abreast of the progress of that process, just so that we don't get too far ahead of ourselves here. This property, as you probably know, is in an opportunity area within that comprehensive plan. And we're excited to share it with you tonight. We think that the plan we're proposing here and the development here will contribute to a number of the city's stated housing goals. In terms of our goals for tonight, Harris is going to walk you through the plan. Really what we're looking for is feedback from everyone here tonight on what we're proposing, but primarily to ensure that things like our land use, density, affordable housing plan are consistent with the town's land use goals and with the comprehensive plan that, as we understand, is going through the process with approval, hopefully, I think, early next year, as we understand the timing. Harris is then going to talk to you a little bit about timing and process here. As I mentioned, this does have to go through an annexation and PD if it were to be developed in the town of Superior. And given the fact that there's a comprehensive plan running kind of simultaneously here, we just want to make sure that our understanding of timing and next steps and sequencing jives with staff and the town's expectations here. I will caution a little bit that this is a concept plan. This is kind of our first stab at what we want to propose here. But in terms of ultimately land use, density, height, scale, that sort of thing, this should be fairly representative of what we would like to do on the property here. I believe we have 45 minutes. We're not going to take anywhere near that much with our presentation. I think we have 20 minutes or so to walk through the concept. The lion's share of that, as I mentioned, will be Harris walking through our concept plan. He's also going to speak to our plan for affordable housing on this property and how that will contribute to the cities and the county's affordable housing goals, but also how the project as a whole will help meet some of those stated housing goals. And finally, we've spent a lot of time trying to understand a lot of the town's land use and policy goals in the past, but also going forward with the comprehensive plan. And we'll talk a little bit about how we believe this development contributes to and advances some of those policies. I won't spend much time here. I think most of you probably know Carmel from our involvement with downtown Superior and the Origin Project, which we've developed. But I like to highlight this because we are, we have a long history here in Colorado. While we are a company now that owns and operates properties all over the country, primarily in coastal gateway markets, our history really is here in Colorado. So the firm's predecessor company, Carmel Companies, was started by Cal Zeff in 1965. If you've been around the metro area long enough, you've probably heard the name. Cal built, I think, close to 8,000 units of apartments in Colorado between the 1960s and sort of early 2000s. And then Ron Zeff, this is Cal's son, formed what is now Carmel Partners in 1996. He still runs the firm today. And we have investments in about 7,500 units in Colorado alone, either in acquisitions or new developments since the firm's founding in the mid 90s. So we have a long history here. And a lot of that, particularly on the development side, is in this three-story, four-story garden product that we're going to be talking about tonight. So with that, let me hand it off to Harris and let him walk you through the plan.
Cool. Thanks, Jeff. Good evening, council. My name's Harris Griswold, just as Jeff mentioned. Just want to start by saying, over the last three years, I've had the privilege of working on Origin, the project in downtown Superior. And what that meant for me personally was weekly and sometimes two to three times a week coming up to the town. And I live in Denver, but always enjoyed my time spent up here, really fell in love with the community, was able to create some great working relationships, relationships with staff, including Renee, Jeffrey, Matt, Martin, to name a few. And all being said, just really excited to be here tonight to talk to you about the concept at 76th Street. I think this is really exciting. So I'm not going to walk through this whole map, but this is meant just to orient, you know, the group on the location. Obviously, the property is noted here and outlined in blue. Looking at the site map and all the adjacent uses that are, you know, symbolized here, my takeaway is that this is a great site for multifamily and the land use makes a lot of sense. The property benefits from great proximity to Boulder County open space directly to the west, while on the east side, it benefits from proximity to Superior Marketplace and the retail there. Directly to the south is Guardian Storage. And then, as Renee mentioned, there's a CDOT maintenance facility to the north. Just to name a few, Costco, Target, Whole Foods, RTD Park and Go are just a few of the names that future residents, you know, with this concept would benefit from proximity to. And then just from a partnership perspective in the town, there's partnerships opportunities with Leslie and the Parks Department and improving access to the open space to the west. I was listening to an OSAC meeting from, I think, July, where they're talking about a trail connection potentially being added to the west of this property here. And then from Public Works perspective, there's obviously partnership opportunities with Brennan and Public Works and Team to just improve access along 76, across 76 to the retail, and then across Marshall Road to the US 36 bikeway, which is noted in the dash white line here. And lastly, at the bottom of the map here, Founder's Park is just located half a mile south, which is less than a 10-minute walk away. So we try to fit a lot in the slide. Sorry if it's hard to read, but this is our site plan. And you have the site data table in the top left here. And just from a use perspective, this is 100% multifamily. And we are sensitive to not propose any competing retail to Superior Marketplace, no competing light industrial to Guardian Storage. We really want to focus on complementing these adjacent existing uses and creating additional customers for them for their continued success. The concept itself features 376 units, which is roughly 29 units to the acre, which aligns with the medium to high-density residential. 15% of these units would be set aside at 80% AMI, complying with the 2020 Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. The main entrance from an access perspective is along 76, across from the Costco gas station drive apron. And then there's an emergency vehicle access path to the north of the property. And if anyone's just from a physical perspective been by the site, I think you'd understand that there's a lot of topography moving from west to east. There's 30 feet of fall, just an elevation drop from the west property line to 76th Street. Therefore, we're putting the water detention basin in the bottom right of the property here. Then on the building front, as Renee mentioned, there's 15 standalone buildings, three to four stories. The buildings noted with the B, which there's two on the bottom here in the bottom left and the top left, those are three four-story splits, which really sit with the grade. So they're, you know, from the locations around town, they're going to be viewed as three stories. The rest of them are three stories, all the same building type, 24 to 28 units per building. These are all stair serve. There's no elevators involved. So this is really just a good residential community feel. And then from a parking perspective, all the parking demand for the property is met on site through a combination of individual garages and surface parking. I didn't mention, but the clubhouse is along the entrance on 76, which will be roughly 8,000 to 10,000 square feet, which will house all the amenities for the property. And then just from a code perspective, the state did create a map post-Marshall fire that dictates certain areas that require this new code update that I understand the town is adopting in 26. And it's the wildfire resiliency code in this property does apply. It does apply to this property. And that means for us, from the design perspective, additional setbacks around the perimeter to comply with adjacent landscaping. There's also requirements on landscaping density and landscaping adjacency to buildings in the dimension there. And then finally, the exterior materials themselves and the fire ratings associated with those. We plan to comply with the code, and this plan does comply from a site layout today. And lastly, from a sustainability perspective, we plan to meet the town's code, which I understand in conversations with staff, potentially is being updated in 26. And just for context, Origin did receive a LEED Gold Certificate across the property. So we'd expect some level of LEED certification on this property as well.
Just a comment before you leave this slide. And I know it's a concept, this one, either one. So 376 units, one entry exit. So, you know, when you come back, you know, because in my head, 50 people might try to go to the office at like, say, 7:45. Can you actually move 50 cars out of here without backing everybody all the way up? Because this is emergency access only, and then this is emergency access only. So there's this entire community. And I was trying to think of any other communities where we have that many homes with that many parking spots that have a single egress point. And I couldn't think of any.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think that obviously the devil's in the details there. And we'll be doing a, as part of our future PDF or, you know, traffic impact study. And I think we can speak more intelligently to it then.
Great.
Next few slides here, just on the aerial imagery around town. So if you can envision, we're sitting in a drone here above Lewisville, looking to the west. We're going to move the drone to above Costco.
I just have one quick question. So that image that we're looking at right there, that's fine. So that parcel that's in between Guardian Storage and your property, that's still in Boulder County?
Yes.
Right? So we're be kind of creating like an island of Boulder County surrounded by Superior on all sides? Is that right?
That's correct.
Yep.
Yeah, that was my question is whether you had had a chance to add any communication or?
Yes, Carmel has and we're continuing discussions daily, weekly with that owner. The house was lost in the fire, unfortunately. And it's just a couple that I think is actually relocated within Superior. And so, you know, obviously, if we come back here, we're hoping that that's included, but we don't need it from a design perspective today.
And Mayor, just so everybody's aware, we have one other parcel that's like that. If you drive directly south on 76, when it comes to the kind of three-way stop, that property right in front of there, it's like a triangle piece, is in Boulder County as well, still. So it's a little enclave.
Okay. So we'll move the drone to above Costco. So this is looking just, you know, north on US 36 towards Boulder. And then we're going to move to the southwest corner of the property, looking to the northeast to Lewisville. Have a few slides here on precedent imagery, starting with our site. So some of the site amenities that, you know, the project here would include would be hardscape pathways, which would take residents between buildings to detached garage buildings from the buildings to the clubhouse, from the clubhouse to 76th Street. And along those pathways would be opportunities for outdoor seating and benches, which are shown in the bottom left and bottom right. And then additionally, we'd envision a dog park, an exterior pool with some grilling stations for the benefit of residents. All the green space here is private open space. And if you divide the total green area divided by the total site size, which is roughly 12 and a half acres, you were at roughly 38% open space ratio.
Looking at the amenities, was there a reason there was no playground? Because that was one of the first things I noticed, is if you've got families in here, I think the pool and hot tub is phenomenal. But there's nowhere for the kids to play. And there's not, there's a park, but there's not an easy way for the kids to get there. You'd have to get in your car and really drive there, unless you really, really want to hoof it. So I'm just curious why there was no playground included, if that was intentional, or maybe you're open to creating some play areas for children?
Yeah, I think we're open to it. I mean, it's this concept, right? And so as we understand the demographic and who the renter profile will be here, I think, if that's the need, then we'll definitely consider it. All right, just zooming into the clubhouse here. So some of the images here represent, you know, what we'd envisioned amenity-wise. So we got a club room, fitness center, co-working lounge, dog wash, exterior pool directly adjacent. And if you, some of these images probably look familiar because a lot of them are from Origin. And then just from an architectural perspective, we really want to just complement the adjacent existing uses there today and build on Superior's existing town character. These are some projects around town in the MSA area, Highlands Ranch and Thornton. Carmel did build the Fieldhouse Apartments here on the middle image in the far right. And as you can notice, the architectural precedent on these three stories are a mixture of, you know, stucco, brick, and some hardy and lap siding. And speaking to affordable housing, so as I mentioned earlier, the concept would include 15% or 57 units, 80% AMI, complying with the 2020 Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. This would be the first units, to my knowledge, to deliver, obviously depending on kite crossing, but they'd be the first affordable units to deliver to Superior since that was passed in 2020. And we thought it was worth noting and highlighting two tables here. So starting with the left, this is a rent ownership comparison. So we're taking their median home value, looking at, you know, today's, you know, interest rate and leading up to a monthly cost of, you know, roughly 7,200. If you look at the average asking rent today at Origin, it's roughly 2,700. And so renting in Origin today represents a 62% discount to homeownership. And then from an income affordability analysis, the median household income is roughly 158,000. The average asking rent at Origin, like I said, is 2,700. That results in a rent to income ratio of roughly 21%. From a mortgage to income perspective, it's 55%. And just want to note HUD's definition of affordable housing is paying no more than 30% of your gross income on your housing expense. And then on the right here, which is meant to illustrate is that all new housing is good housing in that when, you know, projects delivered to the market, there's new supply, such as Origin did, it can create naturally occurring affordability. And so what this is demonstrating is, if you look at the one better market rent today at Origin, it's operating just below 80% AMI. And on a two better, you're in between 80% and 100% AMI.
First of all, thank you for working in some of the affordable housing. Really appreciate that. 15% is kind of the minimum. So have you run the numbers to see if you can make the project work with a higher amount or no?
Yes, there is financial feasibility concerns going above 15%. And, you know, obviously going into this contract, that's the way we structured this deal. And so economically, 15% is what we planned based on the requirement back in 2020.
What if you drop the AMI to 60?
It depends, right? I mean, this is a, this is an amount that's dictated every calendar year. And so this is the 2025. I mean, obviously, 2026 is coming out. And so we don't know how CHAF and HUD are going to, you know, apply rent growth to that figure. So I think, you know, obviously, devil's in the details. But I think what we want to, you know, obviously provide the 15%, but show that additional supply, you know, pacing with demand or outpacing demand creates affordability across the spectrum. And, you know, it helps all renters. Obviously, this concept is going to, you know, fill a lot of needs with mixed income, missing middle. There's some slides about that here in a bit. But we want to create a variety of choices for renters in the future.
Do you have something? So that median home value is for, that's the single-family resident range?
That's correct, yeah.
So these are going to be condo, townhome type living? So the median sales price for those is actually 487, with the lower end being 325 and the higher at 600. So I would just like to see some numbers on this that reflect the actual comparable properties. And even further, we really need 30 to 60% AMI in this community. So some options with that as well.
Yeah. Any other comments on this slide? Keep moving. Next few slides here are meant to just illustrate how the concept that we're proposing here aligns with the town's land use and policies. So starting with the comprehensive plan, obviously, this has been a huge effort from the town. I think, you know, you're guys roughly on it at a year at this point. And it sounds like, you know, we're heading in the right direction towards the final adoption sometime early next year. And I'm just taking a snip here from Cushing Trail's update to council back in February. And what this is highlighting, obviously, our property in red here, but the future land use at that proposed at that time was light industrial or medium to high-density residential. Obviously, we're medium to high-density there. Fast-forwarding along the comp plan timeline to August of '25, from the beginning to August, there was feedbacks, feedback opportunities online. There was also open house. And what that notes here in the red is a 42% preference for housing for the opportunity area. And fast-forwarding to just a few weeks ago in October, there's two options on the right here. I think this was a picture of a board from the open house. And each attendee was given a circle with different colors, as you can note, to dictate their preference on either a low density or medium density. As you can tell, the medium density has more votes than low. Transportation plan. So this was adopted, another huge effort from the town that was adopted in August. This notes a recommendation to complete the Collector roadway section along 76th Street. That includes, on the west side of 76th, there's curb, gutter, and sidewalks that we would improve along our property frontage as part of our concept. That does exist in the Costco on the east side today, but we would just be replicating that scope on the west. And then there's also some notes here about concerns about the highest density scenario for Marketplace and 76th Street and the land use would put McCaslin and Marshall at capacity. My understanding, and based on discussions with staff, is that McCaslin and Marshall does have some improvements that'll take place sometime early next year. But the highest density scenario that they ran did include 375 units for apartments, included 40,000 square feet of retail and 20,000 square feet of office. And what I'm noting is that our 376 units has no retail, no office, and so we're below the highest density scenario. And then finally, obviously, we spoke to it earlier, but we'll be doing a traffic study along with our PD effort. There's a housing needs assessment from '23 back in December. I won't read the whole slide here, but my takeaway was that there should be, there should be focus on not only affordable and workforce, but all types of housing for people with diversity of needs. Our concept would provide additional housing that is attainable and accessible to a wide range of potential residents. 2025, the housing strategies earlier this year in January, Objective One, increase housing choices for people. Just double-clicking on that for a moment. The snip on the right here, there's some further details about removing regulatory barriers to support production of various housing types, such as missing middle housing, senior housing, multifamily housing, and mixed-use housing. And then Objective Two, support and promote local and regional affordable housing efforts. We're complying with the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. And Objective Three, remove housing barriers for those who encounter them. Our concept would provide additional housing, choice, supply, variability, and affordability. And then these two go together. Resolution back in 2018 about the town supporting the goals of the Boulder County Regional Housing Partnerships, regional housing strategy to have 12% regional affordable housing stock by 2035. And then we talked about the ordinance in 2020. Our concept, like we mentioned, is 15% or 57 units of the units would be reserved for residents at 80% AMI. So in summary, we're looking for feedback that, you know, our, our concept here aligns with town policy. We're on the right path with major slight site plan assumptions, including use, density, affordable housing. Our next steps here will be additional community engagement and design refinement. I use the word additional community engagement because we have had outreach informally about our proposed land use with all, you know, adjacent users, including Bricksmore, what's the, Guardian, CDOT, sorry, I was trying, we talked to CDOT as well, Guardian Storage as well, as Jeff mentioned behind me. And so from a timing perspective, we'd really like to walk away from this meeting with some flexibility from council, allowing us to move forward with an annexation petition application after the community engagement process, which would, you know, pushes forward to substantial compliance vote, which can take place concurrently with the final adoption, the comprehensive plan, which would allow us to go forward with the annexation and PD submittal review and approval sometime end of Q1. Obviously, you guys lived through Guardian Storage, where they were the guinea pig for the process. We'll be following the same. There's a long period of time procedurally here and several notice requirements. So we'd like to get some of the procedure going just from a compliance perspective. And with that, I'll shut up and open up for questions.
Thanks, Harris. Appreciate it. Jeff, thanks for the presentation. Open it up for any questions?
Couple of questions. Thanks for the presentation. I appreciate it. With the CDOT facility on the north end of the development, there's, I believe there's some, I'm not sure if there are chemical storage tanks that are within close proximity of a couple of those buildings. So curious if you're aware of what's being stored in those and are those hazardous? And would that pose any risk to residents that would be living in those buildings?
That's a great question. To my understanding, I'm not aware of any chemicals. I believe they store salt there, salt there for winter maintenance, but that'd definitely be a diligence item now that you brought that up. And we're in connection with CDOT, and we'll definitely have a conversation with them about that to make sure.
And sort of on that same vein, there's obviously a lot of heavy truck usage in that area, which is a lot of diesel emissions, a lot of pollution. And given the prevailing winds kind of blow south, so a lot of those exhaust emissions are going to blow right into people's living rooms, kitchens. So just something to think about. I don't know how you remediate that. But I could see that being a concern, especially on cold mornings when trucks are getting ready to go de-ice the roads.
Right, yeah. Yeah, no, it's a great point. I mean, obviously landscaping buffers, setbacks are some options we have at our disposal. But from just a contamination perspective, we'll obviously be doing, you know, a full environmental report on the property as part of our own diligence. And so I believe that's actually, you know, there's an environmental report requirement for the PD. So appreciate you bringing that up. And we'll definitely study that further as we move forward.
And as I understand it, you alluded to possibly a trail going into the open space west. As I understand it, that that's active agricultural land that Boulder County owns and operates. So I'm curious if you've had any conversations with Boulder County about... about providing trail access to active agricultural lands?
We have not to date. We had the pre-app meeting with Renee and team and Leslie was there and we had a conversation with her about it. That would obviously be a hope for us in the property, but there's obviously a lot of feasibility concerns and including Boulder County. So we're not at that stage yet. I do remember just the the OSAC hearing. And I think there's a desire from the town's perspective that, you know, there might be some additional access along that property line. And so that's something we're interested in. Obviously, it's just, you know, running the traps on it.
Okay. And then kind of following up on Councilmember Shaw's question about traffic. You'd mentioned doing a traffic impact study. What at what stage or phase would that be completed? So we could have an understanding of how many vehicles in and out and what traffic would look like there on Seventy-Sixth and Marshall Road?
Totally, yeah. It would be done with the PD. So it'd be part of the package for PD review and approval.
Okay. And then, sorry, my last question. Can you talk a little bit more about, you'd mentioned possibly exploring LEED certification. So could you talk a little bit more about some of the sustainability things that you're looking at? When I hear developers say, yeah, we're gonna meet code?
Yeah.
Code is the bare minimum.
Yeah.
If you don't meet code, you fail. So in my mind, code is D.
Yeah, yeah. No, I get it, yeah.
From a sustainability standpoint.
Appreciate that. I'm not going to sit here and act like I'm a sustainability expert. But I mean, we're obviously going to hire a consultant. That's going to work underneath Architect.
What can we do to get to at least a C, B or even an A?
Yeah. No, I mean, I think it's understanding what the town's sensitive to. Obviously, if there's certain goals for the town. And I think, you know, my understanding is that the the code may be updated in twenty-six. I'm not sure what updates are going to be made. But we're obviously going to comply with that. I mean, obviously, there's there's a, you know, new demand in the market for EV charging. So that's something we're going to focus on, make sure we're adequately, you know, providing the right quantity of EV charging stalls. And then, you know, we always look at solar, but solar is frankly, just a little bit of more of a financial uphill battle with the, you know, the change in the new big bill with Trump taking away the federal tax rebate. I think I heard the the kite route crossing team speaking to that challenge as well. And so, you know, otherwise, I mean, we're going to consider, you know, potential all electrical design for all the buildings. And I think that excludes some of the, you know, fire features that may be around the amenities and that the pool boiler, it's been hard to get an electric, you know, path on those pieces of equipment. But otherwise, we would consider electrical throughout the building's design.
Okay. And then, excuse me, my last sort of observation is it looks like there's a residential unit there sort of on the the east end of the property that's kind of directly across from the gas station. What do you anticipate that experience being like for those people living there? Watching, looking at a gas station?
Here or there?
Kind of on the south end.
Here.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So you have. That's right?
Yep. That one right there, yep.
Oh, in the actual apartment itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, great question. I mean, you know, we probably would want to face balconies away from that. I mean, if we could, you know, it's something we'd study. I can't really speak to it now with with the just being concept, but I think you're bringing up great points and, you know, something we're going to take note of. I hear Jeff behind me taking notes. So, yeah, we'll be studying that.
And then given the proximity, and I don't know anybody that walks home with groceries from Costco, but given the proximity to Costco and possibly Target, how do you envision this being walkable to those amenities?
Yeah.
I don't believe there are any crosswalks at the moment.
Let me see if there's a good image of this. I think there's a crosswalk here. There's a crosswalk around here. That's the nearest location.
Right.
Through Path and Founders Park. You know, I can envision just looking at this map, not the architecture of the facility here in the room, but a path here, which would, you know, potentially bridge the gap between our property and Bricksmore. But, you know, I think that's something we'd have to study with Public Works. I mean, there's potential for maybe it being along, you know, the Marshall Road, you know, and getting somewhere, you know, snaking a pathway along the the gas station. But in talking with Jeffrey, I think there was some grant that either we are in competition or the town was in competition for recently granted to improve some of the pedestrian access along Marshall. And so it'd be something we'd study alongside that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Those were my questions.
Others?
Just high level comments. I actually really like this concept. I think, you know, as long as we've talked about the Seventy-Sixth Street properties, it's always like, well, what can we do there? And housing has always kind of been, you know, high on the list of great uses for the area, you know. And it's interesting because I, you know, I got to know a lot of people in Sagamore, many of whom, quite a few had moved from Rock Creek. And they love the proximity to all the shopping, the proximity to the BRT, Founders Park, Sagamore Pocket Parks. And I think this this can help capitalize on a lot of those same things, you know. RTD still has some work to do in terms of actually providing, you know, good service. But let's assume that they do, that this could actually prove to be, you know, a car free area for many people, especially if you need to go to Boulder or Denver, the airport. I think there's some tinkering that needs to happen here. You know, concepts are exactly that. You know, I think you heard some great comments from Councilmember Foster. I'm actually really concerned, you know, what the parking ratio truly needs to be. I think if we can, as long as I've been up here, I feel like we overdesigned parking and we end up with like a zillion more parking spots than we need. I think downtown's done a great job of trying to think about parking differently. So that's not, we're not all looking at seas and, you know, just a bunch of empty asphalt. The space in front of Target, to me, is like just insane. But if you ask Target, like, well, there's two weeks of the year where we fill it up. Okay, well, what do we get to do for the rest of the year? So that's the proverbial, you know, conflict we all have with our cars and the amount of asphalt that they take. And I think, what is it, like, there's three and a half parking spots for every car in North America. So if you can do anything to kind of, you know, reduce the amount of asphalt there, I think it would help. I think it allows you to bring back some more green space, you know, a pocket park, half mile to walk to Founders is way too far for a kid. Sagamore is a little close, but again, you're still walking around seventy, along Seventy-Sixth Street. What kind of interconnectivity? I know that this is the parcel you're talking about and the Guardian is there and the Sagamore is over there. And everything to me doesn't have to run along Seventy-Sixth. So what kind of creativity can there be? As you as you looked at that other chart, you know, there's this weird sidewalk that runs in the middle of Bricksmore between Michaels and TJ Maxx that's connected to nothing, right? Like, that's the one that you pulled up, right? Like, I think they built that and then they forgot, like, oh, we should do something here, right? So there's things that we can do to create better connectivity to this neighborhood. Because, you know, three hundred seventy-six homes, that's seven hundred people.
It's pedestrian access to the loading docks.
Yeah, we've had, we've had conversations with Bricksmore about that path. And so I think they're they're in alignment with your comments. But, yeah, it's a path to nowhere right now.
Because I think that this could be one of those opportunities for us to really connect, create a connected neighborhood. And I think it's it's going to be, you know, a great addition to the community. But one of the things I want to talk about is your timeline. So are you waiting to submit this until the comp plan is done? Or or other, or you've just got work to do and you're hoping that you can submit this around the same time the comp plan is done? Because I get that the comp plan is process is working, but I don't see that as needing that to be completed for us to engage in terms of an actual discussion about this project.
Yeah. Do you want to speak to any of that or? I don't know. I mean, I guess from a Carmel perspective, we're just sensitive to putting the cart before the horse. Obviously, this is something that you guys have spent a lot of time and money on. And we want to make sure that, you know, the outreach took place and, you know, we're in alignment with that future land use. So from a Carmel perspective, you know, we'd like to take the next step in community engagement, design refinement and work towards the, you know, procedural. It's going to take a lot, you know, a lot of notice, you know, it's going to take some time. But, you know, we can envision a PD, you know, approval and annexation approval sometime the end of Q1.
Okay.
Is our hope.
Yeah, I'm reasonably good with that that timeline. I think that the engagement to me is super critical with this neighborhood here. They're they're the ones that didn't have a lot of comments about the Guardian Storage. The folks that did communicate are really, were looking, where they're actually expecting more housing. They were looking for more neighbors, just more, you know, more kids in this area. So I think really tap into them, try to get the engagement from them. Because I think you'll, you get a lot of great feedback from them. And I think this can be a coexistence thing once, you know, Louisville figures out what the heck they're doing with their redevelopment of the the movie theater. But it doesn't really affect this this project in any way, shape or form. So, but anyways, I love the concept. I appreciate you guys moving this forward. It really does meet the needs that we have talked about in this area in terms of more housing and how to tap into a lot of this wasted asphalt, wasted opportunity in the the Bricksmore area. So, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
No, go ahead. Mine is super quick and this is probably a stupid question. But back to Neil's point about just traffic and people trying to get out at a certain time. Is there a reason that emergency exit on the north can't be a secondary entrance? Like, is there?
It was a comment that came up during our pre-app from Michelle with Mount Efire. I think there's further discussion to be had there, but I think she wants it to be a dedicated emergency vehicle access. She did note that just based on the unit count, there needs to be two eager points. And so, you know, can envision that, you know, Michelle standing here would have a comment and opinion on it. But it's something that we'll have to review with her, you know, at a later date.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to make sure that the comment, so, I mean, yeah, I think you're asking the same question I was. Like, why can't we have two roads?
Yeah.
Fine if it's a road and a fire access, but can it just be a dedicated north-south road?
I don't recall the reason for that comment during pre-app, but, okay, we both don't remember. But it was made by Michelle and so we want to honor Michelle and that comment from a fire access perspective. But, you know, we definitely can relay that feedback and have that conversation.
There might be an opportunity on the south side of that one acre property. It's because Guardian Storage improved half of that for access to theirs.
Yeah.
Might be an opportunity there.
There's an opportunity, there's just some feasibility on the easement side of things. But yes, that's that's another opportunity as well. But all things we'd study with our PD traffic impact study, want to get it right, so.
Thank you. I think a few of my fellow council members here have asked a few of my questions, but just wanted to kind of go back to the conversation about Mike, excuse me, Councilmember Foster, address to the CDOT property. And then I'm also going to address the property that's adjacent to you as well, that is a home and a resident who happened to be sitting here. But my concerns are if this property were to move forward, is the sound for your tenants from CDOT? So I'm not sure just trees might do it. And I know the landscape is extrus, or I know Jim can answer this, but the leveling of that property is probably very similar to the Guardian, where it's got a high degree of changes. So I just want to make sure if this does move forward, that you're conscious of the residents, Harris, and that CDOT property for your own.
Yeah.
Because that's not only from a perspective of what's going on there, but we love it when they're doing our streets at midnight, three AM.
Yeah, exactly.
We appreciate that.
Accusic report, so there would be stations out there that would monitor for, you know, continuous amount of time to, you know, understand the environmental noise coming from that property. I mean, that's something that we're going to be super sensitive to. Just obviously, we don't want to have loss leaders on that property line and units that won't lease. And so that's definitely something we're going to have a vested interest in and understanding. And then obviously, yeah, to your point with the neighbors, you know, met with them last week. There's been some schedule conflicts. Donal and Jay are here, invited them here tonight to make sure that they heard the concept. Obviously, there's going to be opinions, you know, from everyone and some may not be happy with our proposal and that's understood. But we're, you know, committed to working with them and making them aware of the process and making sure we're not pushing this through without consulting the community.
Thank you for that. Not everyone approaches it that way. So very much appreciate that because we do want them obviously included in this conversation. My other concern is really the traffic concerns on Seventy-Sixth with no bike lanes. We heard that from a few residents discussing, kind of looking ahead at this project, as well as what I see as Marshall Road is a higher speed at certain times of the day. And I think my request, and this would probably be a future conversation, would be some sort of a pedestrian crossing because that would be the connection to getting to RTD. I walk from original town across Whole Foods. I just have to dart like across Marshall like Frogger. So I don't want these same people to have to do that across Mark, across the beginning of Marshall, at least in my opinion. So that would just be a concern for me is the traffic coming out of the gas station as well as these residents leaving and coming to and from work or wherever they're heading and that.
Totally, yeah.
Difficult place, so.
Acknowledge that, yeah. And heard, you know, acknowledge the traffic comments. So it's definitely something we're going to pay extra attention to.
Thank you.
Others?
I'll just follow up on a comment that Councilmember Craig Craft had about the the noise and the study that you're going to do. That's not going to stop complaints. You know, if the sound study says, oh, there's going to be no noise, there's going to be noise.
Yeah.
And residents are then going to call CDOT saying, stop the trucks. And that's just going to create more work for CDOT and a level of frustration for the residents. So I really would like us to be thoughtful about how we do that. If just designing from the dais, moving the water quality basin to the north side of the property, to move those units to the south side to just reduce some of that potential conflict. I'll let you guys take a look at that. But I am really concerned that the the noise is going to be more than we think it's going to be and residents are going to be really upset.
Yeah, yeah, I hear that.
And and as Councilmember Craig said, we love when CDOT's operating at three o'clock in the morning, plowing our roads in the snowy months.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't want that to stop.
We don't want that to stop. No, I mean, you know, we, again, Carmel has a big vested interest in getting that right too because we don't want units that won't lease. So we're going to pay special attention to that. I mean, we're also, you know, have some experience downtown Origin. Obviously, you know, there's a lot going on and, you know, we have some experience dealing with the noise complaints. So, you know, we're going to make sure we get it right here.
Anybody else? All right. I'll close with just a couple of thoughts. So obviously, I'm going to be really interested to to understand kind of the traffic impacts. You know, ideally, we have most of the traffic that's going to be traveling on Marshall Road and that the intersection improvements and all that's going to work out. But I think we're going to have people driving on Coal Creek Drive. We're going to have people driving on Sycamore. So there's going to be impact through original town, you know, adjacent to Sagamore neighborhood with with the marketplace in general. We had previously kind of like original, some some affordable housing proposals in the marketplace and a and a concept of adding some units in the in the marketplace as well. And just, it's not the best designed, you know, marketplace and the way the roads handle it with the lights. And it's just, it's it's going, you know, with three hundred plus units, there's going to be an impact on it. So I'm going to, I'm going to wonder, understand just like how everybody's going to travel in that in that existing neighborhood. My my main concern is with like, just like the height and the and the overall like impact on on the neighborhood. So you said three stories. So what's the maximum height you're kind of contemplating right now?
I was just talking to Nathan about this earlier. Nathan, you want to come up and just talk about building height for a second? My understanding is forty to forty-two feet, right, roughly? Depending on where you're taking on the grade. Obviously, there's a lot of slope here, so it's it's hard to get a defined measurement based on, you know, where you're taking it from. But you want to add to that?
Yeah, as Harris mentioned, I mean, I think because there's so much grade, the way we're going to calculate it for your approval process is going to be different than how it lives in the community because the grade's going to come down, right? It's going to be below the floor of the first floor from where we measure it from. So we're going to be in the low forties, low to mid forties is going to be our kind of calculated building height. But if we really look at the height from the first floor to the peak of the ridge of the roof, we're at about forty, forty-one feet.
All right. So, you know, I'm going to want to understand, like, how does that flow with the adjacent land uses, right? So the the marketplace PD with all the heights of those buildings, with the Sagamore neighborhood, with the Guardian project, just to kind of understand, you know, do we have all of a sudden a, something that just seems like of a scale that's more intense than everything that's surrounding it?
They're pretty rough images. These are not drone shots. So I think we'll build on this and. Yeah, I mean, you can envision like on the north side of Origin and downtown Superior. I mean, that's that's the way these would look right from the ground if you're standing in front of them, so.
And obviously, like, the state wants us to build housing, right? And that's going to be, you know, a ongoing consideration and and emphasis from the state in terms of meeting like transit oriented development. I think that like this development in 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 proximity to the bus rapid transit bus stop, I think is is an opportunity for us actually to have like a more walkable neighborhood with the opportunity to walk to the park and ride. I mean, it's not a really close walk, but it's it's it is it is doable. Yeah. And then there there aren't really, you know, sidewalks that can get you all the way to the park and ride.
Yeah, there is. If you cross, if you cross Marshall, the bikeway is a perfectly good sidewalk. If you cross, if you cross Marshall, the bikeway is a perfectly good sidewalk. Like, that's the only thing, you cross Marshall and it's a straight shot.
Yeah.
But you got to cross Marshall.
Yeah.
Or tunnel under it.
Right. So, so then, you know, my, my only remaining thought is like, to the extent that this is a, you know, an annexation into the town currently zoned for, you know, agricultural use, if we're going to be making a zoning decision to allow, you know, medium density residential. My think, my thinking is our affordable housing ordinance of 15% is, is a floor for things that are existing. If we're talking about doing some sort of deal that results in an annexation, I'd like to exceed what that minimum threshold is. And whether that's exceeded by dropping the AMI down to, you know, something in the 60% range or potentially lower, if that's what is really needed, I'm open to that. Or if we raise the 15% to a higher number and get more, then that's something also that I'm, I'm open to. But I'd, I'd like to see some exceeding of what is the minimum required by the ordinance in order to facilitate the annexation.
Noted, yeah. I think we can make our case, obviously, a little bit with a little bit more detail, the missing afford, you know, missing middle and the mixed, you know, income housing. But noting your comment and, you know, we'll have to test the financial feasibility of it. It's obviously just, you know, down to the math, so.
All right.
Understood.
Any additional comments?
Yeah, I have a question just on the size of this, as far as how many people can, like, is, why is that the target?
Like density?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's largely driven by just complementing the adjacent uses to, to Mark's comment. You know, we don't want to, you know, propose a high, high rise or a mid-rise here. We just don't think it really belongs in this neighborhood. And I think, you know, this is a residential community, there's no elevators. It's going to feel really residential and I think residents will appreciate that. So I hope that answers your question.
It does. I just, we, you know, building residential where there are already homes, that then it becomes a view issue is one thing, but there isn't that here.
Right.
And so it's low for there not being any views blocked. And so I was just trying to, this is not, maybe not a, just for you question, but just as a, you know, if there were a place to have taller buildings, that would be a place to do that, right? And I'm not proposing like, you know, a, a bunch of high rises, but there aren't view protections. There, this is not California, right?
I think when, when the marketplace was approved back in the 90s, that, at that point in time, I, I think the PD has some sort of view restrictions, right? Because wasn't there a concern about like what the impact from like 36 would be looking at the marketplace?
I'm, I'd have to go back and look, I'm not sure, yeah.
I seem to recall like Sandy Pennington or Rita DeZell like telling me at some point about, like, there was concern about massing of the buildings in the marketplace with the impact that that was going to have, just kind of the view to the west from 36, but also the view from like original town neighborhood looking, looking west.
So the hotel on the other side of it is fine, but anything. No, ours, it'll be taller than these, so.
Well, to consider too, like, additional density will also, you know, potentially create some traffic and parking issues, so that's something else we'd have to study alongside that.
That's what, yeah, that's kind of where I was asking, like, is this the target? Because there's a, that's a good word, a balance there? Or just help me understand why if we're being asked to create all this housing and then there's housing going in a place where there aren't impacted views, which is, even though it's not the law, it's a big deal. Why is there not a consideration for height? So, yeah, thanks.
All right.
Wait, I would like to know if that exists, though. That would be helpful, thanks.
We would also like to confirm that.
All right, any, anything further? All right, well, Jeff, Harris, thank you for your presentation tonight and we look forward to continuing the conversation with you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Sorry, my, my apologies. Well, let's, let's have some public comment.
Hi, Mike Barnes, a resident of Coal Creek Crossing and also on the Planning Commission. Although I should qualify, I'm not here as a commenting on the planning, as a commissioner, as a resident. When I saw this, the one thing this, this begged of me a question, which I hadn't heard discussed, is do we, what's the mix of rental housing versus housing for sale that we might be targeting to solve our, improve our housing categories for like, well, we've talked about affordable, but missing middle and also senior. And I don't know the answer, but it does beg the question. If this were approved as is, so the only other parcel in town that really is available for housing, for say, housing for sale is the Zatarias property. So 23 acres and with our current code, if it's medium density residential, 40% has got to be open space. So we're looking at maybe 13, 14 acres of land available for homes for sale. And then, of course, there's town 15, which would probably yield about eight acres. But anyway, that's, that's what we have left. So my point is it does limit our options for using homes for sale if, if this were to go as all rental. And I don't know, I guess when I've heard a, a missing middle or starter homes or senior housing, I guess I thought it was housing for sale that we might be considering. But then I realized we've never really defined that if it was one or the other. So that's kind of my general comment on this, that that's, if, if this, and it sounds like it's, it's coming in a couple of months, so that probably would set us down a certain path. Don't know if it's the right path or not, but just, we should be aware of what the consequences are. A couple of comments here, just in general and property, you guys have made a lot of great specific comments, but I can't remember. This area here, if we wanted to build a multi-story building right in here, it's the low point of the property, it's behind Costco. It's probably a site where we could build something, multi-stories with elevators that could be used for senior or affordable housing. I mean, it's, yeah, I don't think anyone would oppose something like that, so. Also, what was the other thing? Oh, this parcel here, I think this is five acres owned, now five acres owned by Kelly. I'm not sure what their plans are. As proposed, we've kind of landlocked that. I didn't see any, well, there's no access to it. So that'd be something, and I don't know what the property owners' intentions are. Let's see, and I think also Jen was mentioned, so yeah, or I think Neil mentioned it too, probably as is, adding maybe 700 people. This is basically doubling the population down in that area. I mean, it's probably more than Sagamore and Coal Creek Crossing combined. So I, I do know that, that staff has really looked at the traffic at the intersection, McCaslin and Marshall. And, and I think it's Alex says he's got it under control, so. But yeah, it does, just, just intuitively, it seems like, wow, it's a lot, a lot of people there. And also, I think the last thing is, I think the, if that's medium density residential, isn't the height restriction in code now 32 feet? So they'd be asking for kind of a variance from what currently is in the code. Okay, I'm, I'm, that's okay, yeah. I just wanted to highlight that, that it is, it is higher than what's in, in the code now. And again, clearly could be addressed in a PD. So I think that was all I wanted to throw out there. Yep, that's it. So thank you all.
Thanks for your comments. Any additional public comment? Come on up.
Thank you. My name is Jay Slater. I live at 7482 Marshall Road, which is this parcel right here. My first comment is that I had a chance to participate in the online survey about the opportunity properties. And this drawing looks nothing like what we're being asked to vote on. On those drawings, and I think Harris showed it in one of the slides, there's literally a yellow line that goes from this road straight south. And this space doesn't have any development on it. All the development is on kind of the west property line from CDOT down to 76 with, you know, open views being kind of proposed. And there's also a pond, an existing pond that's down in this corner, which they're proposing that would be relocated to a different spot. So the first thing is if we're asking the town of Superior to vote on this, we should give them an accurate depiction of what this would really look like. Part of the opportunity survey talks about views and this property, the, the biggest and the tallest buildings on this are west, which would certainly block our view, but other views, this is, as we commented, the high point in, on the property. It's lower down here than it is up there. And they're putting, or proposing to put the tallest buildings at the furthest back of this property. That's a concern for me as well. The individual that commented at the very beginning during the preliminary matters, there was a comment period, someone was online, was talking about the building heights. I don't know of anything west of McCaslin that's more than three stories. Maybe there is, but going through my mind, I don't think there's anything that's anywhere near as tall as what we're proposing be developed in this area. The other thought is this is zoned agricultural currently. We're zoned agricultural. Back in the day, our property, the property just to the north of us is one that we also own, took water out of the canals and they intentionally flooded it. So this used to be a utility easement that goes behind our property. And they would take water out of the canal, run it through some culverts and literally go straight down to this pond. So this pond has been there since 1960, when our house was built, at least, and maybe prior to that. So there's definitely going to be some sort of an environmental impact to the property by moving the pond or doing the development west on this property is depicted here. I think I had a final comment, but I can't, I can't find it now. So I'll pause and yield to my wife.
All right, thanks for your comments.
Oh, boy. Hope I don't start crying like normal. Okay. My name is Donal Slater, Jay's wife. And like he said, we live in that cool little ranch house right there. We've lived there over 20 years. And when we bought it, we had Everett's house was right here. And so we had four neighbors, which is great. It was great. I thought, never in my wildest dreams did I ever think that that would become high density, honestly. We also have a conservation easement on our property through unincorporated Boulder County, which means that we can never develop that land, ever. So that they wanted to preserve that view and Everett's, Everett does not have the conservation easement and neither does the other property on the other side that we also own. That does not, but we do. And we're excited about that because I love nature and I love the outdoors and I love the space. We purchased that house, it was a marijuana growing facility, in case anyone didn't know that. Foreclosed, disgusting. We have spent the last 20 years making it absolutely beautiful. We had horses, we've got donkeys, we have a beautiful barn. We love it, absolutely love it. So when the survey came out that you guys have, do you guys all have a picture of that? That shows this as open space from here to here? I was like, no problem. Put some houses there, great, no problem. There's a beautiful pond down there. We've had elk back there visiting, we have deer, we have owls that nest in there. In that pond area, we have coyotes, skunks, all kinds of nature. Screech owls have, have been in our yard and I've seen them fly over to that pond. So there's little screech owls that live there. We've had all kinds of wildlife back there and I love it. I think it's amazing. I think our community is so lucky to have this space. And I just think, you guys, once it's gone, it's gone. It's just going to be gone. Talk about asphalt, once it's gone, it's gone. We cannot build any higher. When we did our barn after the fire, there were strict things that we could only build at a certain height. So there are view sites that are, should be looked at. Because I'm pretty sure Sagamore couldn't go a certain height, higher than we couldn't. So I don't know why all of a sudden we'd say, sure, let's let that. If you want it here, back here, I think that's fine. But as people drive on Marshall, as people drive on the highway, they're looking over there at the mountains. Absolutely. That is your gateway to Boulder, right there. And you get up the hill, it's like, wow. And we've prided, prided ourselves on taking really good care of that property. We started a dog boarding business, I don't know if you guys know Dog Tag. We had to go through a special process with unincorporated Boulder County. It took us 10 months. We had to do a traffic study, we had to do a water study. And this is just me and my husband, this is a little old ass. That house was also a pit. We couldn't really change anything. You know, they were very, very hard on us, let's say, but it's turned out to be a great, great investment for our community. We serve Lewisville, we serve Superior, it's small, 45 dogs, little. Camp Baoa, over 200, Divine Canine, over 200. So it's really private, it's perfect for Superior and Lewisville and it's very successful. It's been a great addition. We also take pride in that and take very good care of that land and keep it natural. We plant trees, we do all of the things because we love it so much. So we aren't opposed to any of the development that they're talking about, which would be behind CDOT, behind Costco, in, in, you know, in line with Sagamore and all of that kind of thing. But I really hope that you guys will consider looking at that piece of land because it's beautiful. And you can't just relocate. There's frogs, there's ducks, there's herons, there's eagles. I mean, all kinds of animals go to that spot. That, it's a, it's like a gas station for animals. You know, they need water too and they need to come and land in a bush and all of that stuff. So to say that you're just going to move that water basin, it's a pond, it's a habitat. We hear frogs all night long. I mean, it's beautiful. So you can't really say that, well, you know, we'll just move that little pond right over to here because it's been there for 80 years or plus. It's established, it's awesome. Go back there and look. I would love to have some more trails back there. And there is a road that goes straight back that could connect pretty easily. There's two bridges. It could really be really fun. It's so pretty back there. Every time I walk back there, I see at least one coyote. You know, there's always the cows, which are really fun, hawks all the time. We've watched, every year that we've lived there, we've had hawks raise babies in the nests. We've had owls raise babies in those cottonwoods over by that pond, every year. And it'll be gone. So I love the, I love the idea of having housing here, no problem at all. I'm selfishly wanting to keep that open because it's so beautiful. I think the other parts of the, the survey are awesome, putting, you know, high density buildings over by RTD in the marketplace. I think those are fantastic ideas, over by Bell Flatiron, you're not going to bother anybody. It's already ripe for all that, it's by the mall. RTD is right there as well. So I would really hope that if, if this is going to move forward, you need to change your survey and show this. Because I think people would, when they see that, like I did, I'm like, oh, good. They're conserving some, some land and we're going to do some more trails. Great, sounds great. But that's not what is depicted, or depleted, depicted on the survey. So we need to update that and I think sooner than later to make sure that everyone understands that. And that's it for me, I think.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else in the council chambers like to give public comment? All right, anybody on Zoom?
Well, one other thing, that's our driveway. That emergency entrance, we share an entrance with Everett. So I don't really want to stop right there or anything, it's my driveway. So, I mean, I guess emergency vehicles with sirens going by at 3:00 in the morning would be fine. But okay, it's, it's, we share a driveway with him, so that's another thing to consider.
All right, thanks for your comments. All right, anybody else public comment? All right, seeing none, public comment is closed. And final thoughts from council? All right. Thanks for your submission, thanks for the content plan and we look forward to continuing the conversation. All right, we are on to our final item of the evening, which is our executive session for purposes of discussion of a personnel matter not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of the matter in open session, any member of the body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official or personnel policy. office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require a discussion of matters personal to particular employees pursuant to Colorado revised statute 24-6-4024-F regarding the town manager's evaluation and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and/or instruct negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute 24-6-4024-E regarding the town attorney's Yes, they did. All right. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
I'll second.
Well, we need a motion first.
Oh, sorry. I'll move that we move into executives.
All right, we got a motion from council member Foster.
Second.
Second from council member Craig Craft. We're in executive session. You want to give your? Uh, we should vote. We should probably vote. All those in favor? All opposed? All right, so we, we got six, one. All right. Serbu is, is opposed. We're in executive session. You want to give your spiel? You have a spiel? Uh, we're keeping the tape running, right? Okay. All right. We're going to cut the, the feed? All right, we've cut the feed.